Probably so.
I think we need small chairs around. Isaiah, I'm curious. Thank you for giving me a comment.
All right, my, uh, I've got one o'clock here. So let's, I want to call to order the January 27th, 2020 special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. And as always, we'll begin with a safety message, and we've got Mr. Justin Stewart, Journeyman Service Restoration. Mr. Stewart.
Hello.
Hello.
I'll begin with our safety message. In case of emergency, please follow these steps. Exit through the double doors, walk past the security guards through the glass doors. Once outside the building, proceed to the crosswalk, past the Mexicans Council at on the other, oh, and head to parking lot four located on the Wavo and South St. Mary's Street. If we cannot go through the double doors here, exit through the single door around the corner here to the other, on the other side of the boardroom here. Once we all get to the safe location, we will receive further instructions from a member of our safety and security team on next steps. We need your courage and compassion to watch out for your fellow persons and keep them out of harm's way. If you see they're in trouble, remember, zero harm through safety. This concludes our safety message for today.
Thank you, and you'll be back.
Yes.
The next item is public comment. And I think, I'm thinking that the four that have signed up, you all have all been through the, this many times, so maybe this is the meeting where I just skip a lot of this. Everybody knows the guidelines and the rules. All right. So we'll say our first speaker is Russell Seal, followed by Terry Burns.
Good afternoon, board members. Russell Seal from the Sierra Club and longtime member of the Environmental Stakeholders. It was started at the beginning when Doyle Benneby first came on board, and when Mayor Castro asked us to meet with CPS Energy Management, decade ago. Our environmental stakeholders meeting, I was the chair before Mario was. They have now deteriorated. Our meetings have deteriorated. And when we had with Chair Benneby, CEO Benneby, it was a different dynamic. We had a level of trust going on. Now we've had this flex step program coming up in the step, the flex path program coming up. We have been asking at these meetings for maybe three years, before the two years we worked on the CAT process. I served on the Energy and Building Committee for the city. The mayor put us on those committees, and we talked about what our strategies would be, what the processes were going to be during this. And now we have the program, the STEP program under Doyle, and which actually started before him, when Paula was CFO under Milton Lee. It actually started the STEP program before that time period. Now, we have, we ran out the program authorized to 2020, and now we're going to push it out till 2021. It's been plenty of time. We have begged to talk about what the process is going to be for a long time, and now we're having a city council vote next week, and we do not have laid out what that process is going to be. I really appreciate the mayor stepping up to help define what this process is going to be, but we can't delay this much longer. We have a 2030 goal that the city council has adopted, and we have to have a much more sense of urgency to get this done. The most important strategy we had was the STEP II. This is critically important, throwing out that 600 megawatts out there as a starting goal is totally inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seal. So now we have Terry Burns, followed by Mario Bravo.
Good afternoon, board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Terry Burns, a retired pathologist and chair of the Alamos Sierra Club. This morning in the San Antonio Express-News, an editorial stated, "We also believe local officials must do their part by studying an early closure of the coal-fired JK Spruce II plant for purposes of climate change." This is something we've been requesting for the last couple of years. Yesterday, there was a story in the paper about USAA and the insurance risk of climate We have talked about the importance of this. We act in good faith. We'd like to be respected. Instead, we have at least one board member here who treats us with disdain and refers to us as do-gooders. I would like to say that as a physician, I consider myself a do-gooder, and I don't have any reason to apologize for that. And in fact, your entry statement from your safety officer included the words, "Do no harm." That's what we're asking you to do for the community of San Antonio, the citizens here. Do no harm. Protect our health. Protect our climate. Get on board, and if you describe yourself as a dinosaur, perhaps it's time to retire and make room for people who can deal with the science, and the scientific leadership you have here on your staff is tremendous, and dialogue with people who invest their volunteer time in good faith to improve this community. So I call on you, let's put the public back in our public utility. It's about time. And I strongly support the mayor's present proposal to have a citizens' rate advisory committee and get more citizen engagement and be listened to effectively and not token ignoring of us at these stakeholder meetings that I also have attended for several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Our next speaker is Mario Bravo, followed by Greg Harmon.
Good afternoon. I'm here, my name is Mario Bravo. I'm here as speaking as the chair of the Environmental Stakeholders group that meets quarterly with CPS Energy, and I have distributed an open letter to the board of trustees. I have more copies if anybody wants one. I hereby resign from my position as chair of the CPS Energy Environmental Stakeholders, a broad group of environmental advocates that meets quarterly with CPS Energy senior staff. I have participated in these meetings for over four years, serving as chair for the last two years. In all the time that I've participated in these closed-door meetings, I have seen zero progress come about as a result of our discussions. Staff are reluctant to share information with stakeholders, and even more reluctant to put anything into writing. In short, these meetings serve no more than to provide the optics of public participation and accountability. I don't have time to go through the entire letter, but one highlight that I want to point out is that at your last meeting, you approved a $70 million spend to extend the STEP program. As chair of the Environmental Stakeholders, I have submitted three, on three different occasions, starting in 2018, a agenda, proposed agenda, asking to be able to give us an opportunity to provide input on the upcoming STEP program. We were never afforded that opportunity before your vote. We got one email five days before your vote saying, hey, let's set up a meeting. But there's some other points that I want to highlight. For too many members of the public who've tried to work with CPS Energy, trust is broken. Rather than approaching stakeholders as possible partners to work with and seeking solutions to our community's challenges, senior staff have consistently treated us as adversaries to the undermined. Over the past few years, I've had the opportunity to interact with dozens of CPS Energy staff members, and there are many great people here who care about our community and do impressive work. By no means do I mean to cast a wide net and criticize the entire team. There are many employees at CPS Energy who I admire and even consider friends. I will also tell you that I have no desire to tear down CPS Energy or negatively impact your bottom line. San Antonio is my home, and CPS Energy is my public utility. I want us to be the best public utility in the nation, serving as a model for others to see and follow. When a group of stakeholders bring forward ideas on how to improve our utility, I want them to be treated with respect. I believe that if we put all our minds together and challenge each other's ideas in a productive and respectful manner, we can overcome our biggest challenges and achieve great things. However, I am no longer willing to spend my time in closed-door cat-and-mouse stakeholder meetings, and I therefore submit my resignation today. I will close by telling you that I believe there's a better way forward, and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. My ask to you today is simply that you develop a new public participation process that meets best practices as recommended by the American Public Power Association's Public Participation for Community-Owned Utilities: An Implementation Guide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. And the next and last speaker is Greg Harmon.
Hello, thank you. I know that the climate crisis and everything that goes along with that puts an enormous burden on CPS and on this board, and I appreciate everything that's, the challenges that face you. I think some of these responses are fairly stark, and I've expressed those in the past to you all. I mean, as the region's largest polluter, as well as those who are charged with the health, well-being, and affordability for residents of, for the power for residents, I'm really excited to see the ratepayer committee being established that's going to continue to open that dialogue, and hopefully in the future we can get equity in rate-setting, tiered rates, so that as we move forward through this transition, that those who are least culpable for this crisis are protected, and those, the most largest users will bear the burden of transition if there is increased burden. I don't think there will be. I think if you open up an all-source RFP for energy decisions going forward, you'll discover that the potential for batteries and solar, which are both in price-wise collapsing in ways that we couldn't have predicted years ago, but we're not going to find that, those numbers unless you put out an open, an open sign to those in the business. And at this point, it sounds like, and I could be wrong, but it sounds like there may be gas will be negotiated outside of this process independently of solar and battery, I hope not, or that this won't be an open call for all those who may be responsive to the needs of our community. I hate to think that those most vulnerable to this crisis are eliminated from this process, and the ratepayer committee is a good way to move forward into protecting their needs. I'm going to ask one, that the agendas, as we went to deeper transparency, the agendas that are being put out include another level of information similar to what the council allows. Coming in here and speaking to you all is very limiting to not have any additional information about what you're going to be speaking to regarding, let's say, Bumble Flex. And with STEP II moving forward into that, I'm hoping that you will include, this is a ways off now, but include gas in there. That is not just about reducing our electric consumption, but also our gas footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move back to Mr. Stewart and the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Will y'all please stand with me? Thank you. We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stewart. Thank you. So, we met.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted you to tell, tell the group here about interesting things, what age you were when you joined CPS Energy, how long you'd been with us. That was interesting, what the minimum wage was.
Yes, yes, yeah, it was. I was very blessed. My birthday's in August, so when I graduated, I was 17. You know, I'm a baby in my graduating class, and I was told you're going to no longer work for the San Ton River Authority where I worked, or Golden West Oil Company. You're going to city public service, because I ain't proud of it, but education wasn't going to be a big part of my, my life. No, no big secret. So I started here at 17, which they hired me as a temporary, which is a process they used to do. I'm not, I don't think we do anymore. But you get paid minimum wage, which was $3.85 an hour, and once I turned 18, was able to get my commercial driver's license to start progressing my career. Then, of course, everything went up with it, and in 1999, I made apprentice lineman. In 2001, I made journeyman lineman, and now I'm a journeyman service restoration tech, which basically what we do is we're your San Antonio Police Department, your fire department. If you call us, we are going to be there. We work shift work, very long hours. I just recently got off my two weeks of dog watch, which is nine at night till seven in the morning, and this week, I'm an evening guy, which is three in the evening till 11 at night, and it rotates every week. The areas you work rotates that way, you know, you learn our entire system from the back of your hand. It's like, you know, when they send us to certain situations, we don't go by addresses or this and that. I'm heading to a switch or that exact meter number. You know, I don't really care about a physical address. That's, you know, I need to get to where my meter's not doing what it's supposed to be doing, and I love it. I, well, of course, I have 850,000 bosses, that's our customers, but I think we all know my major, major bosses. I report directly to Mr. Rick Maldonado and Dustin Motke. That's my director and my direct manager. And our group is actually pretty small, you know, but we work very, very close hands-on with our system operators, which is kind of the backbone to the company. They, how much to produce, what to produce, where to deliver it, how it gets there, and it's a pretty neat process.
Let me tell them how we met.
Oh, yes, sir.
So it's Thanksgiving Eve.
Yes, sir.
So everybody's, everybody here is probably with their family, and I went out for a walk in my neighborhood. It was already dark, and I went down an alley cutting over, and I ran, I saw a CPS Energy truck. So there was Mr. Stewart. He was working. I knocked on the window. It startled me.
He got me.
And so I, but just like he's enthusiastic, smile on his face, I asked, you know, he was very friendly to me. Before I identified my relationship with CPS Energy, we got in a nice conversation, and it was my neighbors that had their power off, and you were there helping them on Thanksgiving Eve when you should have been with your family. And so it's, it just brought to me what sacrifice you all make.
And, yes, yes, sir, it is.
And I want to know, I want you to know, we feel like your heroes.
Well, we, we thank you, but.
And we're very proud to be part of a company that has employees like you.
Well, it, I'll tell you what, it's a blessing, and, you know, from the bosses, the, and I, and I will say this, I mean, I mean, Paula and I, and I will say this, I mean, I mean, Paula, Fred, Chris, you know, everybody, it's safety is number one, and it's in an everyday message that Paula has sent out. Get home the way that you came here. Go back to your family the way you were sent to us. And she takes a lot of pride in it, I can tell you that. And, and they provide us with the, the top-notch, best equipment that is honestly out there. I mean, that, they, they cut no corners on it. So we're very well stocked and supplied, so when it, Mother Nature doesn't agree with our electrical system too much, we, we got everything we need to get it back as quick as we can, and it, it's a, it's a, it's a process, but it's a, it's, we're, we're well, you know, informed and, and trained to do what we do, so it's a blessing.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank you. And let's give him, let's give him not only an ovation, but a standing ovation. I don't feel like you have to stay for the whole night. We probably need you out there on the field.
I actually do have to get to work today, so, so I'm going to stay for a little bit.
Are we still in the lineman rodeo every year?
Yes, sir. I did when I was young, but when I, when I turned about forty, I'm no longer on the team, man. Same old for the younger boys. Yes, sir.
You did the Eli Manning thing.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. It's my time to go with my time, that's it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right. Next, I think we want to convene to executive session. I think that's, that's what we're going to do. So, Ms. Schellmann.
Yes, sir. At this point, it is one-twenty PM, and the board will convene recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been posted under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including attorney-client matters, deliberations on real property, prospective gifts or donations, personnel, security personnel or devices, economic development, to take, deliberate vote or take final action on competitive matters, or to deliberate regarding security audits and devices and confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act.
Thank you.
One-twenty.[754.88]
This discussion in executive session is resuming the open session. And the next agenda item, if you'd like me to go ahead and...
We're supposed to say no votes?
Yes, there were no, nothing else was discussed, no votes were taken in executive session.
So now we'll move to agenda item seven, and it's resolution for approval of real estate items. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Almenos.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the continuing effort to market and sell the properties that we are vacating in connection with moving to our new headquarters later this year, we've used a full market process to make sure that we have robust competition for these properties. And we have, we are now ready to request board approval to enter into finalization of terms and transact on one of the properties. This is the property at 7,000 San Pedro Avenue, and it's the, what we call our Northside Customer Service Center. It's a call center for us. And so with that, I ask for your consideration on the approval for that.
Well, as you keep reminding us, it was the old...
Solo.
Solo, sir, that's right. People wondering which property.
That's right. It's in its third or fourth lifetime now.
All right. Move to approve.
So we've got a motion from the mayor. Why don't we have, why don't you read the motion?
Move to approve what...
This is a resolution that we have drafted for the board's consideration. It's resolution approving the sale of real property. Whereas CPS Energy owns a building on San Pedro Avenue, as well as the underlying real estate, all of which is described as the Northside Customer Service Center, or the property. And whereas by resolution of the Board of Trustees on September 24, 2018, the property was declared surplus and deemed no longer needed for use in the operation of the gas and electric systems. And whereas CPS Energy retained commercial real estate broker CBRE to market the property for sale. And whereas the Board of Trustees evaluated the bids for the purchase of the property and decided that the property should be sold to the identified buyer pursuant to the terms and price negotiated by CPS Energy. Now therefore be it resolved, one, the recitals to this resolution are hereby incorporated by reference. Two, the Board of Trustees of CPS Energy hereby approves the sale of the Northside Customer Service Center in accordance with the terms and price negotiated by CPS Energy, and authorizes, but does not completely obligate the president and CEO or her designees to complete the sale of the property.
So we've got a motion by the mayor, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
The only comment is, again, thank you so much for all of your involvement. I know that we've asked a lot of questions, want to make sure that we're doing the right things, and I'll ask what has to do with the real estate. So thank you for the leadership in that area.
We appreciate your thorough questions.
And I ask a lot of questions, so just for...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And I also say that CBRE has done a fantastic job in protecting the public's interest in the whole process, so thank you, ma'am.
All in favor?
I agree. So if there's no more discussion, comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Let's move to, thank you, Mr. Almenos. Thank you for your good work, too. Let's move to the CEO's report, agenda item eight.
Hey. Okay, good afternoon. I am going to talk a bit about the board agenda insights, kind of some more context about what we've started covering and what we will cover today. I'm going to make some preliminary comments about the budget, the budget presentation is on agenda. And then I have some slides to talk a bit about Step Bridge. So I'm just going to jump into it. As you just witnessed, we kind of have prioritized focusing on these properties for many reasons. CPS Energy doesn't have to hold on to properties for property sakes, and we're not a commercial real estate business. What we do is we utilize properties, and we have locations all across town. But when we find that we have properties that no longer have a business use for the utility, we come forward to the board, ask for consideration to make it surplus, and then allow those properties to be sold back so that someone else can take those locations and make use of them. The good thing also, just I want to point out again as a reminder, as we sell these properties, what they're doing is they're offsetting the cost of our new location. We have been very, very adamant to try to get a location that is a Greenfield site that is going to be rebuilt downtown, but we got a great deal on the property, and we are reducing the operating cost. Because the longer we're in this building, the more things break. For example, we didn't expect to have to replace eight elevators. About five years ago, we had to replace eight elevators. And so you have all this older infrastructure, and we saw our costs going up in terms of owner and maintenance. When we go to the new building, we'll have a new building, like having a new car, we'll be able to control our costs. We're getting a great deal in terms of cost per square foot. We'll be able to consolidate locations, like selling the customer service center. And we're going to put that as a heart of our organization so we can be embracing our customers. Every person in the building will be able to come through that floor, listen to customer calls, think about what we need to do in terms of...
This discussion in executive session is resuming the open session. And the next agenda item, if you'd like me to go ahead and...
We're supposed to say no votes or...
Yes, there were no, nothing else was discussed, no votes were taken in executive session.
So now we'll move to agenda item seven, and it's resolution for approval of real estate items. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Almenos.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the continuing effort to market and sell the properties that we are vacating in connection with moving to our new headquarters later this year, we've used a full market process to make sure that we have robust competition for these properties. And we have, we are now ready to request board approval to enter into finalization of terms and transact on one of the properties. This is the property at 7,000 San Pedro Avenue, and it's the, what we call our North Side Customer Service Center. It's a call center for us. And so with that, I ask for your consideration on the approval for that.
Well, as you keep reminding us, it was the old...
Solo.
Solo, sir, that's right. People wondering which property.
That's right. It's in its third or fourth lifetime now.
Move to approve.
So we've got a motion from the mayor. Why don't we have, why don't you read the motion?
Move to approve what you want to say.
This is a resolution that we have drafted for the board's consideration. It's resolution approving the sale of real property. Whereas CPS Energy owns a building on San Pedro Avenue, as well as the underlying real estate, all of which is described as the North Side Customer Service Center or the property. And whereas by resolution of the Board of Trustees on September 24th, 2018, the property was declared surplus and deemed no longer needed for use in the operation of the gas and electric systems. And whereas CPS Energy retained commercial real estate broker CBRE to market the property for sale. And whereas the Board of Trustees evaluated the bids for the purchase of the property and decided that the property should be sold to the identified buyer pursuant to the terms and price negotiated by CPS Energy. Now therefore be it resolved, the recit, one, the recitals to this resolution are hereby incorporated by reference. Two, the Board of Trustees of CPS Energy hereby approves the sale of the North Side Customer Service Center in accordance with the terms and price negotiated by CPS Energy and authorizes, but does not completely obligate the president and CEO or her designees to complete the sale of the property.
So we've got a motion by the mayor, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. Any discussion?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
The only comment is, again, thank you so much for all of your involvement. I know that we've asked a lot of questions, want to make sure that we're doing the right things. And I'll ask, because it has to do with the real estate. So thank you for the leadership in that area.
We appreciate your thorough questions.
And I ask a lot of questions, so just for...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
And I also say that CBRE has done a fantastic job in protecting the public's interest in the whole process. So thank you, ma'am.
All in favor?
I agree. So if there's no more discussion, comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Let's move to, thank you, Mr. Almenos. Thank you for your good work, too, yes, ma'am. Let's move to the CEO's report, agenda item eight.
Hey, good afternoon. I am going to talk a bit about the board agenda insights, kind of some more context about what we've started covering and what we will cover today. I'm going to make some preliminary comments about the budget, that the budget presentation is on agenda. And then I have some slides to talk a bit about Step Bridge. So I'm just going to jump into it. As you just witnessed, we kind of have prioritized focusing on these properties for many reasons. CPS Energy doesn't have to hold on to properties for property sakes, and we're not a commercial real estate business. What we do is we utilize properties, and we have locations all across town. But when we find that we have properties that no longer have a business use for the utility, we come forward to the board, ask for consideration to make it surplus, and then allow those properties to be sold back so that someone else can take those locations and make use of them. The good thing also, just I want to point out again as a reminder, as we sell these properties, what they're doing is they're offsetting the cost of our new location. We have been very, very adamant to try to get a location that is a Greenfield site that is going to be rebuilt downtown. But we got a great deal on the property, and we are reducing the operating cost. Because the longer we're in this building, the more things break. For example, we didn't expect to have to replace eight elevators. About five years ago, we had to replace eight elevators. And so you have all this older infrastructure, and we saw our costs going up in terms of owner and maintenance. When we go to the new building, we'll have a new building, like having a new car, we'll be able to control our costs. We're getting a great deal in terms of cost per square foot. We'll be able to consolidate locations, like selling the customer service center. And we're going to put that as a heart of our organization so we can be embracing our customers. Every person in the building will be able to come through that floor, listen to customer calls, think about what we need to do in terms of servicing customers. So strategically, financially, we're doing this deal, and then in turn, giving properties back to the community to reuse them. And today is one of, is a big day because we're making progress on those goals. What we decided to do, we normally come forward with cost savings. And because we had the regular meeting on the 14th, the monthly execution of showing you what we were saving was done on the 14th. But sometimes you get lost in understanding the accumulation and the value of all the savings. So you're going to get an update about what does it look like this year in terms of savings that we have this year, savings that come after that, the following year, and then cumulative savings on the things that we've done. So we wanted to tell a little bit story, and it starts, it's going to start with, we got close to $20 million of savings just by looking at costs and reducing costs benefiting this year. Budget, I'm going to talk about it later, but again, we come through at the beginning of the year, every year, and really explain to the board what we have in the budget and then ask for approval. That's what you will see on our agenda item 12. You are going to get an updated presentation on Flex Power Bundle. We had that on the agenda for the 14th, but we had a lot of stuff on there, so we asked the will of the board, and so we pushed it today, so you will hear. We will talk about how and why we have been sequencing our decisions on where to focus. Again, mostly because we have aging plants, and we have to be careful about that huge risk of plant failure, but not to say that we will not be looking at coal emissions and other things like that. And again, we still have to make sure that, number one, when we poll people, that we're focused on reliability. I want to highlight, and we, you know, we wanted to talk about last month, but you'll see it in the presentation. We understand the feedback that we've been getting about the gas. And so when we do the proposal, what we hope to get to in 2020, we're going to be asking for the profile of the gas from a reliability standpoint, low to no emissions. Can we beat that in some type of technology? So we hear, we've heard the feedback, and we thought about, can it beat the proposal for a gas product on the market? And so that's another element that we're looking at. Flexible path and community engagement, it is all about community engagement. And we understand that we end up with a lot of conversations with folks. I feel unfortunate that the environmentalists group have not felt like they have been heard, but we do listen to them, and the example of looking at a way that we can create a profile on gas is one example. But we want to talk about our ability to talk to many, many customers, including the environmental stakeholders. We hope that they want to continue to talk to us regardless of what we do in the future. We want to hear from them. And I also want to remind everybody that we go out and we are spending time with the solar community, for example. We've been doing that for a while. Last week, I met with the urban land developers, and they want to have a pathway to talk to us about things that are important to them and to help us get input for the things that we're doing. So our outreach will continue, and we will look for different avenues to do that. And we will continue to be at the table with anyone who wants to be at the table with us. We will be here, so. The financial update, we don't have it on the agenda because we thought we spent the most of the time on the budget. We will send it under separate cover, actually might even be in the book now. It's in the book now. So it's in the book. Financials are strong. We pulled out another strong year. Again, you had seen the distributed cost control. You've seen that we were able to keep the plants up to optimize our wholesale revenues. And we have, you know, we have good financial performance on our major metrics. So those financials are out there. Anybody who has a question and wants us to follow up with them, we can. Okay. And I want to talk about what you'll see, because there are some metrics that are a little different. This is not one of them, but I want to compare it to another one that we have. So every, every business has a net income or net loss on their operating statement. And it's calculated as the money that you bring in plus the cost that you have to operate and the general cost that you have to function. And that's standard definition. It may look a little different here and there. You might have selling costs or different things if you're, if you're a commission-based business, but this is pretty standard. What I want to highlight is 2019 was a, was a big performance year for us. And it was due in part for the fact that we had the Dealey units open, and they ran really well. It's like having a used car that you know you're going to trade in, but it runs really well, and you think about it, but you're like, you know what, I'd rather get rid of that car because eventually, again, mechanical things do fail, and it's time to move on from different type of assets. But what it did, when it performed well, it really drove a lot of key financial performance for us. And you'll see, it kind of peaked. It peaked out our net income, and it peaked out our wholesale sales. 2020, this is the year we're in, 2020 ends January 31st, 2020. We kind of got some of the same benefits. We had good cost control, we had great debt refinancing to save money. And then the plants performed, they performed extremely well, and we got wholesale sales. Not as good as 2019 because you had more capacity, but it was good, and you'll see that. 2021, we think we're in pretty good position to ultimately do well. But what you will see is a, is an expected case. Know that the year could get better like it did this year, but there is risk. If the plants do perform, that it won't be as good. But we put in the expected case, and we put in more plant maintenance to help us feel better about the expected case and maybe the upside. So that's, that's what you'll see. 2021, I mean, excuse me, 2022, the following year, we are flashing to you as a, as a preview that we think is going to be much more challenging. Many things are going to happen in 2022. We expect more capacity to come on the grid, we expect the reserve margin to go up, we expect scarcity pricing to perhaps be not as fluid, and the plant, again, will be a couple of years older when we go into fiscal 2022. So you'll see that. Now, we're only going to be asking the board to focus on 2021. The fiscal year view of 2022 is a preview. We are on it, just like we've always been on it. We won't, we won't give up. But we want the board to have full transparency in where we start to see some pressure. Yes, sir?
So, you know, somebody looking at this that's somewhat familiar with CPS Energy, they're thinking 2022, well, that's two years in the future. And it's, I think it's helpful to remind everybody that we're already into 2021, that's going to be this year.
This is, yeah, starting February 1st, we start fiscal 2021.
So when you say it's going to be challenging, we're talking about next year.
When you're up to that. I do want to also highlight that we have a repair and replacement account. A lot of businesses don't have this. Our predecessors from the very beginning talked about what we have as a kind of a fourth financial called the flow of funds. And the flow of funds takes all of your revenues, and it allocates you so that you prioritize your spend. And basically, the way it works, it says your operating costs are first and foremost. If you're not paying your operating costs, you can't do your maintenance on your plant and your infrastructure. You can't do anything. Your creditors, your local creditors, your businesses will cut you off. You've got to make it a priority. So they are first in our prioritization. After that, we go after we pay our debt. Then we pay ourselves. We have to reinvest back into our systems. It creates a discipline for that. Then we pay our owner, city payment, and then there's a residual amount that is how much more you can put back into your systems and investment. So the first R and R account, which I don't have, you'll see it when Gary and Dolores are talking, the first R and R account is a standard in our bond ordinance, requires a 6% component. It is always 6%. But then you can put in that residual amount, probably add another couple of percentage points. We watch that as much as we watch net income because it is the flow of all the revenues. And if your costs are increasing, what will happen is that residual amount you have in the last repair or replacement bucket will start to get smaller. And so if that happens, if, for example, we don't push enough into the R and R, that will mean we'll start to erode our city payment, and Eric's looking at me really nervous here because the next bucket to affect is the payment back to the owners. So we never really want to ever eat into that because we want to make sure that we have a healthy flow. And the rating agencies look at that healthy flow, and we've always been able to maintain it, and we've never had an issue. But I, but we pay attention to it as a guide about where we are. You'll see this also in, in the present, next presentation when it comes up on the budget. But I just want to highlight, so look, if you look at it again, if you kind of go from right to left, you're looking at operating costs, fuel, look how big, that $996 million, that's fuel. PPAs on solar, all of that is inside of there. Then you have your debt requirements. Then you have that yellow bucket, is the first R and R amount, it's standard, you're going to get that. Then we pay $365 million to the city, and this is where trusted Kelly always says, a million dollars a day. That's kind of how he gets that number. Holidays, weekends, leap year, whatever that is, we pay that. And then you see that $92 million on top. And again, we had it where in earlier years, that number was bigger, and now it's getting tighter. And then when you see the forecast for fiscal 22, it gets smaller again. Again, these are things that you have to pay attention to maintain financial stability. And you'll see, and there will be a thorough view of statements so you can see it in more context. But I wanted to highlight to you one thing to look out for when you're looking, listening to the budget presentation. So a lot of words, and it kind of says the same thing. Because we had, in the R and R account, because we had good operations of plants in Dealey, fiscal 2019 extremely strong. Fiscal 21, I didn't use fiscal 20, but fiscal 21 looks again like we think we will be fairly stable, even in that R and R account. And in fiscal 22, it starts to, we start to see some stress. And so as an example, again, I'm going to come out from the podium. Look at this remaining R and R balance, 142, 142 million, 250, that's Dealey inside of there. 193 is where we think we're going to come in now. And now our forecast goes to 90. Again, there's some upside, but there's risk in this number. And then we start our forecast in fiscal 22, less than half. So we're watching all this. Again, there's nothing you all have to do management on it. We're thinking about our solutions and where we head. We just want to be transparent about how things progress over time. Okay.
Can you go back to that slide for just a second?
Yes, sir.
Now, if I'm an analyst on Wall Street, that continuing decline from 250 to 40 really bothers me.
Yes, sir.
And at some point, you see that debt service requirement. If that keeps happening, we're going to get a downgrade in our credit. And now you're going to see your debt service requirement shoot up.
Yes, sir.
Which will put a farther squeeze on your bottom. So that's the reason I keep harping over and over about efficiency of this company. We've got to be efficient, we've got to run it as a company. And you start letting that get out of hand, and it doesn't take a genius on Wall Street to look at that and say, wow, they're headed in the wrong direction. Should they be a double A plus credit or not? No, they shouldn't be. Okay, then let's increase their cost of capital.
Which is a vicious cycle to your point.
Vicious cycle, starts you down the tubes, and it's like trying to stop a, you know, a snowslide halfway down the mountain. Stop it before it gets started, and that's what we have to do here.
And again, we've been pulling this out, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of frustration with our current portfolio. But our current portfolio has helped us manage transition while we have been making progress in many ways. So we, you know, we got to pay attention to this because it's got the operating and maintenance costs in it. You're right, this is the debt that we have that just exists, and you need debt to make everything affordable for customers. Again, you pay yourself because if you're not using this money to reinvest in your capital assets, not good. And then, and then you have your city payment, which is huge, or this helps with the first responder and security of the city. We understand that it is a cost of our business, but you're right. This is the flow in order, and you're exactly right. If our, if our debt costs go up like a percent, the thing that you always talk about, you take in 30 to 60 million dollars right here, it affects that. So it's that balance that when we put all those six pillars on top of the financial stability, that's why we have to look at everything. We can't look at it just one way, we got to look at it all and then ultimately keep checking where we're at.
The other point, you and your team have done an incredible job of keeping that debt service requirement down by refinancing, taking advantage of our cost of capital, taking advantage of our esteemed credit rating. And you've done an incredible job of keeping that down, even as we borrowed more money. But you just mentioned, a 1% move in our interest rate would be $60 million a year. All of a sudden, that 40 then becomes 20 negative. And that's, you can break any rule you want to, but you start breaking the rules of economics, and you'll get caught.
So more to come. We will keep you posted like we always do. Okay, so, a couple of things. The board, we brought this to the board on the 14th, asked for approval of the STEP program. And just as a reminder again, the STEP program is a component of our entire approach to try to have diversified offerings for our community. And we've had the STEP program for over 10 years. And, and when we said be done by 2020, we said, we were expecting to be done by December of 2020, meaning that we reached our goal of saving megawatts for a particular budget. It was 771 megawatts for about $849 million. That was the goal we set up. Now, there were a lot of discussions, mayor, the board, the environmentalists, many people were involved. We got started with that, went down the road. It started out, you know, most people, I almost have to say this, the programs that are on there, they're under the program now, were not where we started. The program was a light bulb program. That's what it was. We gave away a million lights. Because people weren't interested in the new technology and lights. They didn't like the illumination, they were very expensive, and they didn't last as long. The technology wasn't as good. But over the years, working with many experts from around the industry, we added a lot of programs. Like weatherization came in fairly early, and that is a big program that helps people weatherize their house. And we, I think we've done over 25,000 homes. It also includes the solar industry, and we have many companies in San Antonio who are certified to help put on solar installations on top, on rooftops. It ultimately is a segue that we use to create community solar. There are many, many programs in there. We finished early, earlier than we thought. We finished in 2019 instead of the end of 2020. We have, and I will highlight for you, yes, we wrote a letter to the environmentalists asking for formal approval, but we have highlighted on May, on our agenda for May 6th, our meeting, on August 22nd, our meeting with the environmentalists, and on November 19th, we showed them things about the STEP program. Either how it was performing, or just general thoughts about, we got to get more input because we got to go out. We added a survey. That survey, we put out over and over again, asking people, what do they think about the Flex Path? And what do they think about our programs under, under STEP? We are not done. And so ultimately, what we're trying to do is take it and bridge it for this year to get even more input. Because most people are probably, I would say, very much more focused on the coal plants. Fact of the matter. What are we going to do with the coal plants? Are we going to change them and convert them to gas units? That's a question I put out there. What do you think, environmentalists? I ask other people, what do you think about converting it to gas? Rough conversation. Apparently, I ruffled some finger, some feathers with that, didn't mean to. I really mean it. Can we do something with our portfolio that is in the right direction and maybe solves both problems? We didn't make much progress, but it was a, it was a start. And we thought it was a start, and we still think it's a start to look at our options. And we want to look at our assumptions. We proposed to take them back to our assumptions. And we're going to share our assumptions and try to figure out, again, what you choose to believe for population growth, or EV penetration, or fleet conversions matters in terms of creating these models. Have we run models? Yes, we've had run models. Have they been conclusive? And are we relying on those models? No, because every time we looked at them, they were inconclusive. They didn't really get at it. Yes, we would love to say all solar program would be great, and we'd love to. But again, we have the obligation of reliability. We have the obligation to maintain financial stability as we do it. And so we're, what we've done is asked for time to... And so what we've done is asked for time to work things out. So here we go, we got the board's approval. And we plan to go this week to ask for a bridge. If the program is good and effective, we want to use it for one more year, while we get even more input and try to get more people at the table. And then figure out how to create a longer program and answer every board member's questions. Now, I have heard that the request is for CPS Energy to not approve STEP. I'm not for CPS, but the council, do not approve STEP because it's a bad program and people haven't gotten feedback. That's what I've heard. But if we don't get the approval to move forward with the bridge, we have to cut it off, because we will not have authority to do those programs. And we could affect, so-
Explain that, the request from whom is not-
Council. So the board has to approve it, and council has to approve it, for us to be able to continue into this year, because we're done. We only had approval to reach those megawatts and spend those monies, and we're done a year early, so we need authorization through the bridge period to go forward. So, that's all we're asking. We will spend time again, trying to explain where we are and what we're trying to do. If we don't get approval, solar cuts off. If we don't get approval, weatherization cuts off. If we don't get approval, all the programs, I mean, we have to suspend it until we go through the open period for more discussion. So, we just want to again, collaborate some more and try to figure out how to, how to use this as a bridge. And again, we're getting questions from every board member, we need to come back and answer those questions, answer community questions, make sure people understand what's in the program and what's not.
Paula, can you tell me, what is the open period duration? Like, if we don't vote on it, and you said it must go into open period, period discussion, what is that duration?
A year, a year. Through the, through the big bridge process.
No, 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 that's, like, if we don't support it, and we say, nope, let's just go back for more public input, then to revisit this, would that be a year?
As long as you all like, or as short as you want, but it has to go through both.
So it's contingent upon city council or mayor and us, what that public input looks like, and what that, and what that duration is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify. Yeah, we're, we're gonna try to plan it out so we could be done by the end of the year. Answer, we're gonna start, we're gonna start updates about what we're getting and what we see. And then again, continue to ask people, what do you like about the program, what don't you like? Yes, we've heard comments about the program's too tiny.
Or too generous.
We've heard those two, we've heard both sides, we've heard both sides. So the program was 771 megawatts, and the thing was, it should have been 2,000. 2,000's great, it just increases the bill. And so again, what, what do, what does the community really want if we do it, how do we do it? We're just asking, keep something good in place that we already have for one more year. Do the, the conversation period at the same time, try to be done by the fall, get in front of this. Not, I would prefer to be there before the end of the calendar year, in front of the board and in front of the council, to figure out what the longer program looks like.
Let me ask a question. Under our authority, the council has direct input into four areas of our business. Approving trustee, approving debt, approving condemnation, and approving rate increases. Under which four does this fall? Rate increase?
This is extra, because it's an extra program that we created collaboratively with them. So we end up operating under a special ordinance, where we treat it as the fifth fuel. And it's a pasture, because CPS Energy doesn't end up with the investment, the customer does, we don't own the asset. We do the program, so it's, it's like doing a solar PPA. This is that kind of program, but in case of the ordinance, because everybody pays for it, and the type of program that it was, it has its own special ordinance.
If we get a legal brief on that, that's going outside the purview of our charter.
Can, can you repeat again, those four items again, so?
Condemnation, debt, rate increases, new trustees. That's the four areas that we are specifically going to the council for approval. Why do we go to the council for approval on this?
This is, this is how we created it, so that we could create-
I think it goes back, what, 10 years ago, when it was created, I think it was-
I'd like to see a legal briefing on that. We could be going against the charter of this corporation.
I don't, I don't think we are.
Well, I want to see a legal briefing, I want, I want to submit this to our outside council and get a briefing that we need to go to council for this type of stuff. It does not fall within the four parameters that I've told from the very beginning, that the original owners and the original founders of this company set up those four areas. No others, four. Which one of the four is this?
It is not one of the four.
Then I want a legal briefing, tell me why it needs to go to council. And I'm not kidding, I want it. I'm not just saying that.
I know, you're not kidding, sir.
Yeah, and I guess I, I don't know what his thoughts are behind that. There are two things where I'm torn. As someone who grew up in a very part of the town, humble beginnings, I can tell you that I subsidize my mother today. And it's these types of programs that sometimes make it easier for me to provide to everybody else, including my family. She's not the only family member I support. And so like, for example, the weatherization program is excellent. I've been at those community meetings, the light bulbs, the education, the things that certain segments of our population worry about are not some of the other things that are tied priority of the people that have come to this meeting. But I'm also open to not approving it, getting public input. Because I do think that, you know, I, I, since I started this board, I want to get more diverse public input. And at the same time, I also believe that this should be something that we should be going to council, because it's very vital, in my opinion, to meeting inequalities and to providing for our community. I mean, this is a very, in my opinion, a very vital program that meets a lot of different pillars of what CPS stands for and what our leadership in the committee also expects us as trustees to, to execute. And that is encourage better habits of, of, of taking care of environment, meeting financial needs for the people who live paycheck to paycheck. I mean, it just does a lot of good things as well. So I'm kind of like, not quite sure where to go with this. I'm, I'm in his court as far as like, why do we need council approval? But at the same time, I'm also of the mindset that we need more public input to make sure that maybe city council and our citizens feel comfortable that as trustees, we're doing the right thing, that it doesn't require such due diligence every year or every- You know, maybe it's not every 10 years we let it run, but maybe it's every two years we let it run without a public input process or having to go to council, because things change, needs change. We live in an environment that is global, things are faster moving faster, they don't stay as long as they used to in the good old days. So that's just my-
Let me remind us of one other thing.
Just to clarify, we've, we've approved this, right?
We have approved it.
We've approved it one year's attention.
One year's attention.
A STEP, which has been approved.
We've approved it.
But the council has-
So you've taken it to council. No, no, I just wanted to be clear.
But let me, let me remind you of one other thing. This company would not be in business if it was unable to borrow $6 billion from investors. Those investors have covenants within their documents. And I bet you in those covenants, it says the city of San Antonio will restrict itself to four areas. I bet you it says that in our bond documents. And I want a review by, if I'm counsel, of this type of stuff. If I'm an investor in this company, and I spent hundreds of thousands, perhaps millions of dollars of my money to buy bonds, and it says council can do these things, and yet council's doing all of this stuff, you are breaching your agreement with me as a bondholder. You get that? And so I, as a bondholder, I'm not a bondholder, but I know a lot of a bondholder. I want counsel, I want our outside bond counsel to look at this type of stuff. We, we're pushing the limits on, without that $6 billion, this company's gone. We have no way to generate capital improvements except the bond market. And if the bond market lose, loses confidence in this company, because we're getting deeper and deeper and deeper into the political waters, that line item on interest is gonna shoot sky high. So we've got to quit politicizing this company. This is a company, it's got 1,200,000 customers, it's got 3,100 employees, it's got $11 billion in resources. This is not a social club. This is a company, and it requires your type of work and your management to run it.
Well, there you go. Robust conversation. Look, you know, again, I will say, sir, we'll absolutely follow up on this. We, the, the best thing, everything we've done has been disclosed to all bondholders. But you, you raise a good point, but I believe that we are covered in this case, but we will get your informal opinion.
I want outside bond counsel.
And just so I'm clear, we already voted on the bridge, but it still needs to get city council approval.
Now it has to go to council, we've already approved it.
But again, there is this discussion about whether or not-
The bridge was, but what you're, what we're-
Yeah, we, we haven't done Flex, we were trying to do Flex STEP, but that's what we're doing.
But the other one is the one that we were-
Bridge, you, you all have approved, we are scheduled to go over there on Thursday.
But that's, the bridge needs to be voted upon.
Bridge.
So I think, I think-
I didn't know that.
That's news to me.
No, that's news to me.
It does not fall within those four parameters.
I think Mr. Kelly has a good question. I've got to think that 10 years ago, this was thoroughly discussed in terms of the council and the city being involved in this in an unusual way. So it's just a question of digging up.
Yeah, because that's, that's news, because when we would have voted, we would have known that it doesn't matter if we vote.
No, it does matter if you vote.
Really?
No, if you don't, if you don't vote-
I, I think what I'm saying-
Madam, you don't vote, it doesn't go across the street.
No, no, but what I'm saying is that in many ways, your goal is in vain, if we didn't, I mean, I didn't know that, hey, think about something, put some energy into something, support something, advocate something, and then by the way, your hands are still tied, it's, it's not, it's not gonna come to fruition.
Your hands are not tied, because you could have voted no, and then we can't take anything.
But that's not what I'm saying, no is what it goes, what he is saying, that it still has to go to council approval.
It, nothing goes to council, because we have to get your approval to even issue bonds.
That's one of the four.
But, but we get your approval. So nobody bought them something just because it had to go to council. We brought it to you, and if you don't want us to do the program, it doesn't go across the street. Now, there's a lot of input that happens with that, because you're gonna stop people from getting weatherization and the different programs. But we take nothing across the street without your approval, nothing.
I'll, just chime in for a second. I believe it has to do with the fuel adjustment, which is why I would come to council, but we can confirm all that. I will say that there's, for every item on the council agenda, there is always argument and counter-argument. I, I think that, as we've demonstrated through this board, the, in the work over the last 10 years, the STEP program has performed quite well for this organization, has done exceedingly well from an emissions reduction standpoint, a cost-saving standpoint. And that's why I think it's, it's, it's well and good that we should extend it for another year as we look to the future of STEP. I support it, and I hope my council colleagues will as well, and I, and I plan to make that case if there is any discussion on it. But I think that folks see the big picture in what we're trying to do here. So I don't, if there's consternation about the uncertainty of a council vote, welcome to my world. But I think we'll be okay, because the, because the board and CPS has demonstrated a good track record with CPS on the, on the STEP program, as well as a willingness to continue to do good work moving forward in the next step.
I'm gonna close this out.
By the way, if there's, if there's anybody here that can shed light on it, it'd be nice not to leave this hanging, the, the inquiry that Mr. Kelly's making.
Any bond counsel?
No, anybody at this meeting that could shed light on, on why this goes to a vote at city council.
I, I will explain what I believe to be the case. Certainly will defer to bond counsel, but first of all-
Were you, were you here?
I was here.
10 years ago?
Yes. We, we did ask our bond counsel to look at it. The, there were a couple of reasons that we did, and one is because we, through the STEP program, we spend money that is not automatically recovered by rates. So you wait a year, you determine whether the program has performed. And if it does, then the utility gets the money returned through the fuel factor, as the mayor pointed out. And so that is potentially a concern, because one of the bond covenants is that you have to have rates that recover all your costs. And we are basically spending money for which we have no rate in place to recover it, except one year later. And so that's why I believe the council needs to approve this, because it is in effect a rate that we will be charging. It's not the same kind of rate as we charge for monthly service to people, but it involves expenditure of dollars for which there's no specific rate other than the one that the council approves a year later. So I think it fits within both the bond covenants and on, in terms of the, the requirement that we get approval for rates to recover our expenses, as well as the fact that there's a deferral of a year that we needed to get approval for. But this is-
Let's submit it to bond counsel and ask for their opinion, I'd like to see their opinion.
We will bring that forward.
I'd be happy to ask for that.
And I just think in the future-
And things may change, so.
And then for those of us who are new, it would have been, at least, and maybe you said it, maybe I missed it, it would have been nice to have known, even though I know we say we, our, our job is to vet, to recommend, to support. But then I think my responsibility as a trustee is to get buy-in from city council, even though I know there's plenty of people that are hard to do that. I just believe I take my position very seriously. And if I represent a constituent and I firmly believe in a program, then I would have loved to have known and then try to build advocacy and consensus, or even feedback to approve it, because I think it's very vital to our community that we have this in place for a segment of our population.
Good suggestion, we'll try to provide more of that for you.
We did not expect, we did not expect the, the struggle. We've been doing this for 10 years.
And fairness, I, I respect, I get, I get that.
And we hear you.
I just think we're in a different, I keep saying it.
Yes, we are.
We're in a very different, I almost feel like I'm the transitional trustee, and instead of things, they're tough. But that's okay, I'm good at that. I'm okay with that. I just, again, I, I think that we have very good colleagues around this table. I think our mayor and everybody who participates here, we're all trying to do the right thing. I just again, think that what I don't want is to just be here to be here. All of us have personal commitments to, and if we don't matter, then the processes matter.
Absolutely. And we all need to understand what the requirements are, so we need to prepare for that.
We, we will refresh, but again, I'm gonna, I've got to state a couple of things. We take nothing to the owner that you don't see. And you opine on what you believe, and you, we brought this vote to you. If you had said no, we would not have taken it to the council. And of course, there would be huge discussion, because there is huge discussion no matter what. But I want to assure you, this is not a rubber stamp, your vote is the vote that we have, that's the first hurdle. Other than that, we can't do anything. And even for the four authorities that the council has, they have to be vetted by you first. Imminent domain, all those things. You watch the entire substation and transmission process, and you opine. The only issues we have now is, for example, in some cases, the transmission discussion is now being done by PUC. Other than that, you still see what's going on, and we bring most things to you, we bring everything to you that needs a vote. So there is no belief that the priority, that hurdle that we have to get through is the board, that's one. Two, this is an example of what I'm, what we deal with every single day. We are pushed and pulled of the goodness and the negativity and the problems and the hurdles, trying to get something done for the good. And even when you do something fairly simple, everybody has a challenge with it. You didn't do it right, you didn't give them enough information, you didn't spend enough time reminding them of the issues. We take that, that burden on, and we will do all the things to make you comfortable and to make our customers and our stakeholders comfortable. But it's tough work. This team works really hard to try to do the right things. And the criticisms are huge, are huge. Because it's hard to do it exactly the way my board, others would like us to do. But we don't give up. We are here, we will get through the STEP issue. You have given us lots of other things to do on STEP, sir, and, and madam. So we will do that, and we will do it with a smile on our face. And the journal just said we gotta do the right thing for everyone.
Ms. Schellman, since Ed's right, Mr. Kelly's raised, raises- Ms. Shelman, since Ed's right, Mr. Kelly's raised his fundamental question, it's going to council on Thursday. Can we, can we get something expedited in terms of some kind of an opinion on it?
I'll do my best.
And I, I, I would think maybe it'd start going back and looking at the documents.
I have it in my office, the ones that we.
10 years ago. I'm positive this was covered, but.
It was.
It was. We had multiple conversations.
Slightly different perspective, but yes, we spent quite a bit of time on it, and we got a written opinion from council, our bond council about it.
Well, that was super spirited and awesome. If I have any more questions, I will sit down.
Thank you, Madam CEO.
Okay.
All right, let's move to agenda item nine, additional updates. And this is cost savings fiscal year 2020 and its recap. And do you feel like you've already introduced it through your reports, so we'll just ask Mr. Berry to come up?
Thank you. Good afternoon. As Paula mentioned, what we wanted to do today is provide a look back at the topics that have been presented over the last year. And individually, when you look at the topics, it's important to see those, but I also think it provides, as Paula noted, an interesting perspective to look at those in total. And so what we really want to do today is summarize our success at saving customers money. And what we plan to do today is show you our estimate of the savings from all of the initiatives that we presented this year for fiscal '20, and as well as a look into fiscal '21, and also look at, take a quick look at some of those initiatives. This is a slide that, that we present often in different presentations, and really what we're just trying to show here is that we are working to meet the growth of our community. Our community is growing. At the same time, we are working to promote efficiency, helping our customers find ways to lower their energy bills and save energy. And we are working diligently to find ways to cut costs. All of this together is how we are able to save our customers money and add value. Our success at, at saving money for our, saving money directly benefits our customers. Everything we do is to keep our customers' bills affordable. And so when we looked at the topics, and we'll, in the next slide, we'll take a look at the detail. When we went back and aggregated the savings for fiscal '20 from the topics that were presented over the last year, those totaled $18.5 million. Paula noted almost $20 million. And if you look forward into 2021, we see the savings from those topics exceeding $20 million. In total, looking at the 12 topics that we presented over this past year, the total on all those topics across all the years totaled nearly $335 million.
How many years?
These topics, and I, and I flipped to the next slide, so that's a great transition, Mr. Steen. You know, some of these topics that we talk about here, like I'll mention, the August topic, our prepaid gas savings. You can see the savings on that, $104 million. That is a, that is a contract that we have in place over 20 years, so that's savings over a 20-year period.
Oh, that's right. When you take each one, then you're, it's a different period.
That's right. Topic that, the advanced cable testing topic in the month of September, you can notice that is a large number as well. Total savings of $183 million. Now, that is over a, a number of years that we're going to see those savings. Likewise, even if you look at some of the, the topics like our March topic, the financing plan savings, that $5.4 million, and then if you look out to the last column, you see $29.5 million. Again, those are initiatives that provide benefits in the current year as well, as well as in the future years. So we take these, we build these into our budgets, into our, our projections. The, the savings that you see there for fiscal '21 have been built into our budgets that we'll be talking about here shortly. But as we noted, when we look at these topics, we look at them to provide savings, not just in the current year, but for over many years to come. See if there's any other questions.
I think they've done an incredible job in doing this, and that's the reason, or the main reason, we have not had a rate increase in six years. Our last rate increase kicked in, I recall, February 1, 2014. Go look at your grocery bill, go look at any other bill that you pay and see if it's been constant for six years. And the reason we've done it is because of some outstanding work on behalf of Paula and her team as laid out right there. So that's a tremendous success story, and I congratulate you.
Sir, any other questions are coming?
Good job.
Yeah, and to our CEO, thank you for leading this effort and putting the emphasis there.
The, the board made it clear that that is one of the main things, and to also bring those stories back. I mean, we were doing things and not sharing them, which doesn't help anybody. So thank you for making it a priority of what we need to focus on and giving us the time to do that, and we will continue.
Thank you. All right, now we move to the consent agenda, which is agenda item 10, and it's got three items. Minutes of the special board meeting held on 12/6/2019. Minutes of the regular board meeting held on 12/16/2019. Payment to the city of San Antonio for December 2019.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
So we've got a motion for, from Dr. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? Everybody's had an opportunity to look at. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to committee reports. Are you ready, Mr. Kelly? You've got one for the personnel committee?
Yes, personnel committee met on January 9 of this year, and broad form, we looked at three general items. We approved the meeting minutes from the meeting held on June 14, 2019, and reviewed open action item. We reviewed an overview of CPS Energy's succession planning process and current status, and we reviewed the mid-year validation of the metric results for the fiscal year 20 annual performance plan. So that was, was the item that was covered in the personnel committee meeting of January 9.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2021 budget. And Ms. Dolores, you're going to introduce this, and this is a discussion and vote.
She is also, she's not only going to introduce it, she is going to take the first part of the presentation.
It's similar to our preview. Both Gary and I will be presenting the fiscal year 2021 financial plan, also known as the budget. Our financial plan.
Well, before you go on, one thing, the trustees have met with you.
Yes.
On a, on a one-on-one basis, so you, you might go through this fairly.
Well, not all trustees.
Dr. Mackey, the trustee.
My travel schedule was bad. I, I, they reached out with time, and I just could not accommodate. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
But I'm a quick, I'm fairly quick, so.
No, but my point is that we, that this is not the only time we're looking at this.
Oh, no, 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 that's true. In fairness, we, we get information provided to us all the time.
We might move through it pretty expeditiously, but we, we, we dealt with this, all of us, more than this, this meeting.
Yes, Paula went through some of the highlights, so for those areas, we won't cover them again to save some time. So today, we'll be taking you through the FY 2021 and FY 2022 projections. And at the end of the presentation, we'll be asking for your approval of the FY 21 budget. We will have some comparisons to fiscal year 2022, just so you can have a baseline in terms of what we're covering. Our presentation will have some company highlights, a brief, a refresh of the financial planning process for those who are not familiar. We'll discuss the FY 21 budget in pretty good detail, and then finally ask for the proposal. San Antonio-born, raised, and we live our people-first culture. And as a utility, we provide reliable, affordable energy to our customers and community. Every decision that we make is grounded in our community and our customers having value from the services that we provide. We're also immersed in the community. As an example, we have people-first affairs, public input forums, as well as our citizens advisory committee that's representing the, the districts within San Antonio, as well as the people at large. Our leadership also spends a great deal of time in the community through their service on boards and committees, as well as celebrating successes within the community. Just recently, we had a march, the largest MLK march in the nation, and we were there to support it. Our company has been around for 160 years, and 76-plus years it's been community-owned. I grew up in San Antonio, so I have a personal stake in the success of San Antonio. We run CPS Energy as a business from an operational and a financial perspective. We look at revenues, we monitor expenses and try to drive on cost to the extent that we can, and we manage debt. As Mr. Kelly pointed out, we have one of the lowest cost of capital. We've been in the market six times this year, and one of the common phrases that our investors and underwriters attribute to us is high value. We have one of the best credit ratings in the industry. The only utility that has a better credit rating is the Tennessee Valley Authority, mainly because it's federally backed. So we're very proud of that fact. We also review federal, state, and local policies and regulations to ensure that we're in compliance. As you know, we're in probably the most transformation in the utility business than we have had inception to date. And we are poised as a utility to embrace all of that change. Let's talk about our numbers. We're especially proud of some of our stats. We're the largest municipally-owned electric and gas utility in the nation, the largest solar power producer in Texas, and we have 1.1 million customers. That is a large customer base. And as Paula pointed out, $11 billion in assets and almost $3 billion in annual revenue. So a sizable operation. We have shown this slide in many presentations, but I wanted to pause here and take us through it because it's very important to highlight that these are our guiding principles. There are six pillars of reliability, customer affordability, security, safety, environmental responsibility, and resiliency. Being financially responsible is the layer to all of those six pillars because everything we do, we have a financial lens, and as Paula often points out, everything costs money. Reliability, when your light switch turns on, you want the lights to come on. You want to make sure that you have that reliability that you can count on. That's why our people are working every single day, 24/7, to serve you. Affordability matters. We know there are people in our community where they have a choice of paying the utility bill or buying groceries, so we are very sensitive to that, and so therefore we keep that as a lens in all our decisions. And security. People, our property of data are very important to us, and we have unveiled a number of partnerships to help secure those areas of our business and formed lots of alliances as an association with that. And then environmental responsibility. We consider that a very important part of our business. And if you can recall, we were focused on renewables early on, so we were one of the forerunners in that area, which we're pretty proud of. Then resiliency. To the extent that something happens, a natural disaster, we want to be able to restart our systems so you can access electricity as quickly as possible. Sometimes people focus on one aspect of the six pillars, but at the end of the day, they're all equally important, and they're important to different customer sets, always with a financial responsibility lens. So for those of you who might not be familiar with the financial planning process of the budget process, there are a number of inputs that go into it, cross-functionally within our utility, as well as external sources such as ERCOT or FRAID, where we get inputs for customer growth, fuel cost, interest rate, market power prices, so that when we bring this budget to you, it's thoughtful. And it's also important to highlight, internally within our organization, we go through numbers of iterations before we bring this budget to you. And we challenge business unit leaders, is that something they need, or is it nice to have? And I can say with 100% assurance, this is a needs-based budget. We also, throughout the year, as we update our generation inputs, we also refresh our budgets. So when we come to this time of the year, we don't spend extensive amount of time doing a lot of updates. So it's on a real-time basis. We take a long view as well, a 25-year view, where we're focusing on our generation, and we have the short-term view, which is in the upcoming fiscal year, which we're asking you to approve. And that middle area is our intermediate-term plan, where we're looking at what's next, and then how does that fit into our overall generation plan. How much is San Antonio expected to grow? Right now, as of October 29, we have 1.5 million people in San Antonio. We currently rank second-largest in Texas, seventh in the nation, and we're expecting 1.1 more million people by 2040. So we're expecting a lot of growth, and that means our service territory expands, and we have to accommodate that growth. You'll recall from our discussion with the substation and Midtown, we're accommodating growth as we, our service territory grows. Our economy is strong, both in San Antonio and Texas, and we have tons of people flooding in that are attracted to our, our city because of the, it's a great place to live and a great place to raise families. I will take a second to highlight some of our cost savings that we've had over the last 10 years. $345 million. Now, these savings are not guaranteed over the next 10 years, but I do want to highlight some of the operational efficiencies and improvements, such as that STP of $138 million, the refinancing of our debt at $104 million, and contract savings of $69 million. And you can see the other savings that we've highlighted there. The key point from this slide is those savings are not guaranteed, and there may be a different mix of savings in the future. You've seen this slide, and the only thing I will highlight in this slide is that in fiscal year 2021, we're asking the board to approve capital budget of $684 million and a non-fuel on-end budget of $712 million. And the other thing that I would highlight and reiterate, what Paula said, that $92 million in that purple square is the barometer of our health. And right now, for fiscal year 2021, we're reasonably healthy, but as that number rose, it puts our utility at risk. The next slide highlights our governance and budget approval. One of the things that we do monthly is approve our city payment. We also have annual approvals, which is the non-fuel on-end and capital, which we will be asking for approval. For fuel purchases, it's governed by our procurement policy. Our debt issuance is approved by our CPS Energy Board, and then subsequently the council. And then any repairs and replacement additions are governed by bond counsel. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Gary, and he will take you through key assumptions and financials.
Thank you, Dolores. As Dolores mentioned, the next few slides, it's going to be a look at many of the key assumptions that go into this budget that we're presenting to you today. And the first one here is a look at electric customer growth rates. The picture here is very consistent with what we have seen in past years. Electric customer growth continues at right around 2% a year. Very consistent, like I said, with prior years. This next year, for fiscal 2021, we're projecting customer growth at 1.8% and then back up to 2% in 2022. The line across the top reflects our usage per customer in our residential customer class. And what we have been seeing, and this again is very consistent, is that we are seeing usage per customer declining in our residential class. And it's primarily driven by the fact that we're seeing more efficient homes, more efficient appliances, the success of our STEP program. All have provided the opportunity for our customers to use less, and that is very much a good thing for our customers and our community. Looking at gas customer growth rates, again, a very consistent picture with what we have seen in prior years. Gas customer growth averages approximately 1% per year. And then, the line across the top reflects the usage per customer, again, by our residential customers. That line is fairly consistent and is primarily weather-driven, with most of the usage of gas occurring in our residential customer class during the winter to heat their homes, and is very much weather-dependent. This is a look at our revenue requirements, or sometimes referred to as our flow of funds. And the first thing that I would note here for our flow of funds is that you can see our uses of revenue must equal our sources. That's a very important thing. We've got to balance this out every single year. The second thing that I would note is if you look at the sources of revenue and you look at that bar for our retail electric, and you can see how much of our revenues are attributable to our retail electric customers. And we'll actually see that again on a later slide, that you can see that over years, that is definitely the case. So, this is a look at our sources of revenue. Again, you can see the size of the blue bar. You know, in addition to our retail electric, we have our distribution gas and our wholesale electric and non-operating. Couple of things that I would highlight here. Fiscal 2019, Paula talked about that being the last year at Dealey. And in the table down below, you can see the number of $325 million for wholesale electric in 2019. There was a tremendous wholesale year with us having that capacity from Dealey. And then, you can see that number continuing to decline as we look forward. The other item that I would mention is on that next line item, non-operating, looking at 2021. And you can see a jump up in, from $31 million in the current fiscal year to $53 million, and then back down to $25 million. What we have built into that particular line item is an assumption related to our property sales. Uses of revenue. Paula showed this slide earlier, so I'm not going to go into a tremendous amount of detail. The key item that I wanted to highlight was the last item in that table, our remaining R&amp;R contributions. But Paula has already spoken about that. Operating expenses. This is a look at our non-fuel, as well as our fuel, both from an electric and distribution gas perspective, and then our regulatory costs. The box in 2021 that is outlined in green of $712 million is the amount that we're asking the board to approve. That amount for 2021 is up from the current fiscal year of 2020, again, reflecting the investment that we need to make in our plans to ensure the reliability for us to continue to deliver on the wholesale performance that we have been seeing. Our capital plan. Again, I'll direct your attention to the table. The box in green, $684 million. That is the amount that we're requesting the board to approve. As we look at some of the key things happening, and probably the most noticeable you'll see in 2020, the capital of $760 million. That includes the acquisition that we completed earlier this year of the JBSA electric and gas infrastructure. That was one year after that. Then, we start to see the capital come back down. But we are still seeing increases in our capital plan. Those increases are to meet customer growth, as well here to invest in our infrastructure, our plants, our distribution system to ensure reliability. And then, the last item that I would note is you can look at the orange section of the stacked bars, and you can see that in 2019 and 2020, you can see those are a little bit larger, and then also a slightly larger amount in 2021. This is where the budget is for our headquarters project. I'll note that all of that project is cash-funded. And as Paula noted, we're using the proceeds from our property sales going towards that particular capital project. How do we pay for our capital plan? This slide here reflects the allocation between debt and cash. I think probably the most noticeable in 2020, and then looking forward to 2021 and 2022, is that our projections of funding our capital program with more cash than we are with debt. And the reason that we're doing that is part of our effort to continue to drive down our debt percent. We currently have a threshold or target of 60% for our debt level. We are right now at 61%. We want to push that number down, and funding our capital program with more cash will allow us to be successful in that initiative. This particular slide is taking a look at the current year. And I kind of take us back a year. When we were here presenting to the board our fiscal 2020 budget, we were projecting a net income of, in that first column, you can see that little blue bar of $2.1 million. And today, we are here projecting that we are going to end the year at just under $145 million. And at the time that we presented to the board back last January, we committed to improving that bottom line by $15 million. And I would tell you that everything that you see outside of the box, the cost-reduction efforts, the financing opportunities, we delivered on all of those. We were very successful, and it was the work of the entire organization that allowed us to be successful at that. But as we went through the year, we saw other things that were occurring in the wholesale market. We saw an improvement in our wholesale revenues as a result of the tight ERCOT margins. And some, as a result of those tight margins, some pricing that was higher than what we had anticipated. And then, in the first column, our, the higher volumes from our retail revenues. That was really a reflection of the hot weather that we saw beginning in August, going into September, even for the first week of October. Those types of things, we can't guarantee those results. Those are things that, they occur, whether it's the weather or whether there are events in the ERCOT market. We can project those, but there is no guarantee, as well as how well our units are going to perform to allow us to capture those wholesale revenues. And as our units get older, there is always the risk that we will not be able to capture them. That being said, as we look into fiscal 2021, and again, I'll take you to the first column. That was our projection for 2021 last year, a negative $38.8 million for our net income. Today, in our current budget that we're bringing to the board, we're projecting a net income of $3.9 million. We've updated our assumptions. We've learned a little bit from the tight market, the tight ERCOT market with the reserve margins, and we have updated our wholesale revenues. We've included the property sales in 2021, which is when we expect those transactions to occur. And we have built in increased plant maintenance costs that will allow us to be successful on capturing those wholesale market revenues with the market being, continuing to be tight. The ERCOT market has improved a little bit. The reserve margins are up this year, and we're projecting those to be increasing, but we still see those opportunities. And then, as always, we have been successful at our financing initiatives. Some of what I talked about in my cost-savings presentation has been built into this estimate as well. And so, all in all, we are projecting net income for this fiscal year 2021 of $3.9 million. So, now, what we'll do is taking a look at the next few, fiscal 2022. And while we're not asking the board today to approve fiscal 2022, this is a look ahead, as based on what we see today. And again, the first column is our fiscal '21 income and some of the changes that we're projecting. Because I mentioned earlier that property sales are occurring only in fiscal 2021, we would not see the benefit of those in 2022. And so, that would be a reduction of net income. And then, we're going to continue to see needs to invest in our plants, making sure that we are providing reliability. So, the additional increase is built in, as well as higher forecasted debt obligations associated with our capital plan. We're looking closely at 2022, and we wanted to provide this look. And we see the, this, you know, the pressures, and we're going to continue to look at that over this next year. But for today, we're only requesting the board's approval of 2021. The final thing I would note, we talked a little bit about the remaining R&amp;R. And up in the right-hand, upper-right-hand corner, we provided a table that looks at 2021, as well as '22, and looked at the remaining R&amp;R and net income. There are two slightly different calculations, but there is a significant correlation between those two. And when we see the remaining R&amp;R decreasing, as Paula noted, going from $92 million to $40 million in fiscal '22 projections, we see that same decline in our net income. I just wanted to provide that additional context for that. And these are our metrics. And our metrics as well are correlated to the financial results that we've gone through here. For 2021, in the green box, our adjusted debt service coverage and our days' cash still remain above our thresholds. Our threshold for debt service coverage is 1.5x coverage, and our days' cash on hand is 150. But you can see, we have started moving closer to those numbers from 2020. Our debt equity percentage is, we're projecting at 61.7%. Again, our goal is to get that number down below 60%. And then, in the final column, we have provided a look at our projected metrics for fiscal '22. And this is the year that we're going to continue to really focus on. We're going to look at 2021 and improving that one. But 2022 is going to be a year of even more focus. And so, with that, today, we're here requesting the board's approval for our fiscal 2021 budget, the capital of $684 million that both Dolores and I mentioned, our non-fuel ONM of $712.8 million. Our total budget is just, is at $2.75 billion. That's the flow of funds, the total revenue requirements that we talked about. This budget includes what we need in terms of both funding and plan expense for our employee benefit obligations, as well as it includes the spending associated with the bridge STEP program, and also what we need to continue to meet those pillars around reliability, safety, environmental performance, customer affordability. Finally, we want to make sure that we continue to maintain and strengthen our financial, key financial metrics. So, with that, I will answer any questions. Just a minute.
What is the average cost to service a customer?
The average cost to service a customer.
Can you be more specific?
Oh, yeah, like, I mean, it takes me $3 million to service the average. I mean, everything that we're talking about, like, when I look at the last slide, for example, right? I'm assuming that all those things are costs associated to servicing a customer. So, what would be like the average cost?
That's a good question. I don't think we, within finance, have been thinking of it that way.
Well, the only reason why I'm thinking about it is just to get, you know, we talk about, you know, we're seeing a growth of 2%.
Yes.
Mentioned that. And so, I guess my question in a very simple way, and maybe it's too complicated, I don't know better.
No, it's not.
Because I do things like, what does it cost me to find a customer, retain a customer? So, that's kind of like the way I set up my budget. So, my question would be, are we in line to, if we're going by 2%, is our budget sustaining the average cost per customer? Is the way I kind of want to think about it. I don't know if that makes sense.
It makes perfect sense. We've done.
Maybe I'm overcomplicating it.
No, it's not overcomplicated. We take a business unit approach versus the cost per customer. We can absolutely provide that information to you.
So, because I just saw, because it's growing by 50%. Is that correct, that one section? Like, this right here, I think when I look at the budget, everything is pretty average, as far as the way the budget is broken down. But I think that would increase significantly, right? To support that.
You mean the ONM?
Yeah.
Part where we're needing to put more maintenance?
Right.
I don't think it's 50%.
But it grew.
It's going to grow.
It's going to grow. So, that's why I'm asking that question of, if it's growing, that means that our cost is common sense. I mean, he probably knows more than I do, but just my, my simple math means.
So, if you took, if you took the budget, so how Gary showed, total revenues, $2.7 million, is that right?
This number right here.
Yeah, okay. And you divided it just by the electric company, because typically, your gas customers, they're dual-service, right? So, you might, if you just go after the electric customers, about 850,000 customers. If you broke that in a year, it costs you $3,161 bucks a year to service your customer base. Now, your growth is more like, I don't think we provided the numbers. When we say 2%.
That's probably about 20,000, roughly 20,000 customers.
So, your growth in itself does not pay for everything it takes you to connect a customer, because you do an upfront investment.
And that's what I'm asking.
So, that's just operating cost. Your capital plan is bigger. Inside your debt, you're paying principal and interest. But if you look at how you have to service for the year, about $3,000, but it's not funded solely with growth, you're spreading, what we have are the economies of scale, so you're spreading all the costs.
And that's why I asked that question, because I think sometimes when we ask for a budget increase, it's very, obviously, you have to break it down. But I mean, it makes more common sense to say, well, yeah, it's not enough as we're growing to meet that, versus saying, oh, we have to invest in our infrastructure, and we got to go buy and build another solar plant or a battery plant. But it's again, it just makes it more easy to, relatable, I guess. Relatable to the average citizen that it's, we don't have enough to keep in touch, like to, we need more new revenue, I guess, and also sustainment of what we have today so that we can maintain the growth projections that we see in our city of San Antonio, because it's not enough, but we generated revenue today to service the customer.
It is today. I think we're flashing about, again, as your cost to, again, here, the cost to operate this building is one thing, but it is increasing all the time. It's like you having to replace the engine, having to replace the transmission system. And so, your cost of owning that car in year one is different than your cost of owning that car in year 20. And so, that causes us to do those things. However, you're not paying for a brand-new car again. And so, that's going to be a billion dollars added to the base if we were actually building infrastructure.
Right, because when I look at, I mean, I see our threats slightly different. I mean, I still see that our threat to, again, safety, reliability, and environmental performance, and all the ask of the community, is going to be, again, competition, the opening of competition in their field. I think the other one's going to be, in general, for the whole city, is maintaining growth and meeting new time expectations. They're spoiled by the Ubers of the world and the Amazons of the world. So, how we deliver service is going to be, requires some significant investment. And then, I also think the biggest threat also is just regulations. Again, if it's open to competition.
The landscape is broad and deep with all. You're right, all of that matters in terms of, and you got to, people say, well, you're not in a competitive market, but we got to give our customers all the benefits of competition on the electric side anyway, right? You don't not give it to them, and you got to monitor that. So, you're exactly right.
Okay, but thank you. But I think kind of the 3,000 something, I mean, it's not accurate, but I just wanted to get a sense for what it costs per an average customer to service.
Yes, I totally hear you. What I was thinking about is a concept similar to like fully burdened cost.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the.
And then, you have all the costs associated with that particular customer.
Well, I just think it's important to kind of know. I mean, I think this is at a high level, but sometimes when we're making these decisions is like, again, where are you going to, where are we going to take to meet the, where we're at today, current state, future state? And what does it really cost us? And what is, and how are we in line with our budget with that? Versus, this is great, but it doesn't show, I guess, for me visually like, this is why the gap is growing because we're not keeping up with growth. We're not keeping up with the cost to service a customer and this is where we're at. I know, Mr. Kennedy, you think very different. I didn't mean to hog the conversation, but those are my thoughts.
Dr. Gonzalez, we will do a specific.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Dr. Mackey has a question.
I'd like to extend on that. We, I'm looking at this, the key financial metrics. And, you know, we have a debt of 1.5, but I know in 2021, we're 1.6, so we're looking good. But, you know, I'm looking at two in the long range, fans sort of waiting on this to jump on us for 2022, even though we approved this year. What are we doing to make this all work for us in the next year? What are we doing pre-planning to look ahead, things that we need to do in order to correct this issue? Because I'm looking at the cash on hand, it's going from 161 to 131. And then, our debt equity is going from 61 to 62.4. But the bottom line, we're $62.6 million. You know, what plan are we putting in place? What are we, what are we doing proactively in order to not only approve this year, but have a plan, a process, a plan in place to correct this issue for the future reference?
Well, you know, we had a very similar situation. So, we're going to do a lot of the standard blocking and tackling. We're going to go after more cost reductions. We're going to go after the financing. We're going to do the maintenance on the plants to make sure that they operate going forward. That gives us the best ability to attack this issue. Here's the big fallacy, though, to your point, is even though we performed in those years.
That's right.
A huge part of our performance has come from the competitive markets. Somewhere around 15% to 20% of our activity that's in capacity is coming because we're selling power outside. And the plant, keeping the plants healthy allows us to do that. But the problem with it is you can't guarantee that you're going to be able to win in the competitive markets. The reason why we win is because we are what we call long in generation. We have enough capacity to cover everything in San Antonio and then put it in the open market. And when the plants run exactly at the time that volatility hits, we become a price pusher, not a price taker. So, we have to, again, the problems that we have, we have to keep looking at the flexible path to think about the new generation, to have enough reliable power. What are we going to do to replace, replace those units in the long run? And we're trying to have a conversation about how do we do it? If we give up our competitive advantage and don't have enough capacity, then we can't, we can't fix that. And then, we're going to have to look to see, ultimately, we're going to have to do a rate increase because we can't have it all based upon volatility in the market. It ultimately has to be covering the fixed cost and then giving us more opportunity to look for leverage. Now, we've done our best. We've only had one rate increase in nine years, nine. And we've, and it's been six years. So, every time we get this opportunity, we take it, sir, and we go and run with it. And then, we try to be realistic about what else we might need to do. So, we have to keep coming back to the board with those new opportunities. And for as long as we can push them off, we push them off. Ultimately, we're going to need one.
Well, I know we keep pushing some things off, but I want to know ahead of time, instead of waiting for this 2022, which we've been planning for next January, what are we doing now and when are we going to be informed on what is the next decision that we need to make?
We are, we are working on our plan currently and we plan to come back even next month to talk to you about what we're, what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, actually, can I, yeah, can I piggyback on Dr. Mackey's comments? And actually, just specific to that, what was our FY '24 budget on our reserve and volume revenue when we adopted the FY '20?
On the net income side?
Yeah, it was 2.1, but what was, what was that? What other elements were baked into that to get us to that 2.1 in FY '20 that was budgeted?
Reduct, cost savings.
You remember what that was?
What was our wholesale revenue?
It was our, yeah. Because we're, we're this year budgeting 39.7.
Our wholesale target that year was, I think, around 50 million.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
We came in at 120, so that 66 is really what brought that 2.1 up. Paula's point is this year's budget, yeah, and we performed. But this year's budget, we have 90 million in wholesale. Historically, we were at 50.
Betting on 40 now.
We're starting to put.
You know, we're doing well and that's why, you know, it feels better if we can put some more maintenance on it. We could feel like we can edge that number up and make the plants perform as best we can.
Or some of the stuff that we've discussed, which is potentially, after some more feedback and research and modeling, pivot some of those into a more environmental-friendly type output. Coal versus gas. And maybe it's not what everybody wants to hear, but we're taking some drastic measures into repurposing our investment already, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, we're going to be bringing to the board, you know, what could that look like in the long run?
And that's maybe the public input back to the open source, R and P requirements.
Is the power bundle, so it's exactly that.
Can I still ask a question?
Sure.
On the FY '20, Slide 22, can you describe a little bit more about increased plant maintenance? What are, what are we programming in there?
So, as Paula mentioned, we are including additional dollars, about, roughly about $20 million that we need to put into our plants to ensure their reliability to allow us to be successful capturing that wholesale revenue.
Chris can give a little bit.
Where is that 20 million, where was that?
Right in the middle there, increased plant maintenance.
Closer to 30 million.
Close to 30 million? Okay, okay. So, is that going to be enough to make sure the plant? Because I remember last year, we purchased that new equipment out there that came in and we've had numerous problems. Oh, is that going to be enough to cover us? Because it doesn't take for one major fault.
That's incremental, not the budget. It's how much more we're putting in. Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Drs.
Yeah, so I think, you know, one of the items that you're looking at is sort of increased rotor maintenance. So, we're running our combined cycles a lot more than they have historically because Texas needs power and combined cycles are the most efficient, you know, and have the lowest carbon footprint from the, you know, from the fossil side versus the coal or the gas steam unit. So, but we're running those combined cycles a lot more. So, we're having to do rotor, they're basically run hours when you have to, you know, pull that rotor out, inspect it, replace it. And so, we, you know, we're going to be bringing in front of the board. We're going to run it through the Ops Committee, a comprehensive rotor replacement for our combined cycle fleet.
So, this is, this is the segment of R and R that's going above the 6%. Is that right?
Okay.
Or am I getting that wrong?
As I said, on a different statement, this is the, these are the types of repair that are just operating expense investments.
O and M, we call it O and M.
That's, that's it.
This is not capital.
This is not.
This is not capital. So, we have capital dollars and then we have existing baseline dollars and this is incremental dollars. But it's just the stuff like you have, it's like, again, like making a major repair so your car could keep going.
No, I mean, I get it. I mean, I know what that is.
Mayor Newenberg, I have those data points that you requested. When we presented the budget in fiscal year 2020, we presented it with and without $15 million of committed cost savings. And adjusted debt service coverage was 1.64 and 1.68. Days cash on hand was 193 and 198. Then, the debt to equity capitalization was 63% and 62.9. So, it's 2.1 versus $17 million of net income.
Okay. And one other clarification, you know, we talked about our length. You know, we have, we've got length, like Paula said. But our mission and all the money that's been, you know, raised from our communities to serve San Antonio. But we have some excess because if we have a plant that fails, we don't want to be out in the market buying power. So, our length is really our insurance against scarcity pricing. So, if all our plants are performing, then we have the ability to sell. But we don't naturally go long to, you know, for speculative reasons. We do it to protect our customers.
That's exactly right.
And so, all of our plants are running, we have this wholesale opportunity.
So, it's restated because it's such an important point. The San Antonio customers have first claim on everything we produce. So, if all the, if two plants go down and the community consumes everything that's left, they get it first. But so, what Chris is saying is, well, by doing that, we don't have to go to the market and wait for someone to look for opportunity pricing and then escalate their cost to us. We can control the cost and it's only our cost without all that profit margin in there. And it is our way of ensuring we cover all of San Antonio and protect them from the market volatility that happens in the summer. And sometimes now in the winter.
When was the last time we found ourselves as a purchaser? Do we have that?
Have not been, no, we have not.
I mean, there are certain times during kind of the shoulder months, spring and fall, where it may be cheaper to purchase from the market and we won't, we won't run our plants. But if our plants are at lower cost, then we'll bring that cost.
We have it and we have a choice.
We have a choice, but in August, we're not.
The argument is that it keeps our customers insulated from the cost spikes that occur on the market. Plus, it also helps our fiscal stability to maintain our position long, if possible. Well, you know, I'm looking at the '22 budget and, you know, obviously, this is just a forecast. It's not a budget. And I see that big line below the, below zero and concerns me, although I look back and we've been there before and y'all did great work, you know, meeting in the middle and also, you know, maintaining our, our ability to be nimble in the market and so forth. So, y'all have done great work on '21 since we're coming in about where we were in terms of our net income from the previous year. So, good job. I also want to thank you, Paula. You've been quite open to discussions I've had about, you know, how do we bake in our bigger policy issues? You know, there's a, there's always this back and forth about, you know, how do we, how do we maintain our strength in a position that's really in a, in a market evolving in terms of resource generation? How do we ensure that we're maintaining our affordability? How do we bake into our process, the concerns, the real concerns about equity and customers who, you know, you're right, at cost for groceries have gone up every year, but our utility rates have not gone up. You know, the unfortunate part that we find ourselves in is that neither have wages. And so, the pressure increases on everyone. So, how do we, how do we, how do we have all these discussions knowing that our utilities, our housing costs, our transportation costs are all baked into whether or not somebody can actually afford to live here? These are big policy discussions. And so, I want to thank you, Paula, because you've been very open to me in our discussions about the Rate Advisory Committee and how do we, you know, grapple with these bigger issues as we talk about an ongoing process of rate, structure, rate design? And so, that's what I mentioned to y'all and look forward to earning your support for it. Just, just to be clear, since there was a discussion in media about it, what I'm asking for is a Rate Advisory Committee that includes a technical group as well as a stakeholder group to really help us in a long-term way look at our overall rate design and resource planning and bring the customers back involved in that process so we can get a real 360-degree discussion about how do we ensure that what we do here is following the wishes of our customers and also dealing with the bigger challenges of the overall industry? So, I just wanted to publicly thank, you know, you, Paula, and your staff as well as my colleagues in taking up this discussion. Look forward to earning your support for it over the next month. And if you have any questions for me, I look forward to answering those too. But thank you for the good work on FY '21.
Are there any other questions or comments on this budget issue?
Other than, let's say, not address not cutting the budget from the O and M, the investment in the plant maintenance, is there anywhere else we can shake?
Do what you want.
I know, I'm asking.
We could continue to look, but we have.
I know, I know, we're kind of leaning. I'm just, I'm just saying, there's certain areas where I believe we shouldn't.
Yes.
And then, there's other areas that if we can say if we could and prepare, like, you know, I would just say, continue to look.
We are.
Because I think that we need to, we need to, again, we have very little money, make really smart investments and then pivot where we can, knowing that this industry, you don't see it right away in anticipation. Once this process that our mayor is asking us to support might highlight some things. But I, I think for me, always a challenge, and I think for most of us that are not active participants that show up to every meeting here or may not even participate in this new advisory committee, is how do we make this relatable?
Yes.
Kind of even goes back to like, what's the cost per customer and what do they get? I mean, I think something so simple is not always so easily communicated and we get hung up for right reasons on being here 10 years from now and not having asthma and not having cancer and all these other things that are just as important. But also, the person who doesn't care to die of cancer, they care about paying their bills. I mean, I hate to say it. And that's always the balance. And then, the third balance is the individual who wants instant, you know, customer service and new technologies. And so, we find ourselves at that inroads. And so, I want to be mindful where we don't want to not rely on us to control prices and then generate income and at the same time, find other ways where we could.
We totally, totally understand. We're always looking for cost savings and there will be some opportunities when we move to the new building to centralize some, some things to drive small amounts of cost, but we are always looking for cost savings.
Exactly, I mean. We will continue.
No, I'm just saying, just because people look at our budget and they're like, oh, it's great. What are you complaining about? But in the big picture of things, what exactly does that translate to the average person? That for them, that seems significant budget and yet they're struggling.
That's an excellent point. Thank you.
All right. So, we have a request for board approval of capital and nonfuel O and M budget for fiscal year 2021. If you're ready, we could take a motion on that.
I'll move a broom.
Okay, Mayor, so we've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dr. Mackey. So, any further discussion?
So, let me just, on the discussion point, I've, I think we're really putting Paula and her team in a tough situation, though. Maybe it's just me, but when I ran businesses, the budget was what I ran them off of. And if I couldn't depend on the budget, I had a hard time running the business. And we showed her a budget going in the last year of $2 million, whatever it is, $2.1 million in positive cash flow, if you will. And we ended up with 145 million. That's a 70 multiple. I don't know how I would have managed that. I mean, it's great. I'd rather have it go that way than the other way. But if it can go 70x up, Mike could go 70x down next time. And so, as a manager, I would have a really tough time with the budget. This year, we're showing a 3.9 million plus. Well, is that going to end up being 150 million plus or 150 million minus? How do I manage to that if I'm CEO? And so, the concern I have is I hope we have a process, and I know we do, but we better watch it very, very carefully and monitoring variances from the budget. Are you going to actually try to manage to a 3.9 million dollar budget?
Try to beat it. Try to beat it.
But you're setting, you're setting your goal for next year that you're going to generate 3.9 million dollars in positive cash flow.
And then, we got to, it's an uphill battle.
It's better than what we said last year, though.
Every year is like starting over again. You, the only thing that you get to hold on to is any cash that you accumulate. But every year, you have to go after those savings and you are accommodating growth at the same time. You do have to do the maintenance. So, it is like, it's like being at the starting line every single year and you can't, you don't get credit for being a star and reaching the Olympics. The last year, you got to go into training and, to your point, do all these things. So, we. So, we, we are looking again at more cost savings, and where can we save, and how can we optimize?
I, again, I'm going to stress it, I don't know. I think the missing link is, we can have this, and we understand, but it goes back to these, this new committee somehow. We need to translate that, or they can give us wonderful feedback to find other ways to run this organization effectively. But it can't just be cutting and cutting.
Okay, but is this committee supposed to be overseeing the running of the business?
I don't know.
At the everyday budget?
That's not the intent, I think we might be running afoul of the agenda if we go too far.
Oh, my God. I'm not, not to say, look, not to say that, we appreciate everybody's opinion, and we want to, we want to listen to everybody. But it's tough. If you're, if you're in the business of airplane travel, right? Does anybody care how you make an airplane? You jump on it every day. You jump on it every day, but do I have to know where the bolts are? That it costs 500 million dollars? That I need to know the maintenance, those kind of things? The average citizen can tell us anything they need to, and we will, we will show you as much as we can, right? As much as we can, until your eyes glaze over, which is pretty quick. Because it's, because it's boring stuff. It's stuff that engineers and accountants geek out over. The average person. So, so, I know we're going to try to make this work, but if we're talking about somebody who's going to tell us how to operate and take that away from the management team, should we have you all look at it?
No, let's not, we're not making it more complicated than it is. There's a great analog right now, the closest one there is, at SAW. This is about rate, rate structure, rate design, resource planning. This is, this is not how, this does not replace the board of directors, it's not replace the management.
I think, Mayor, as you were saying, I think that we're talking about the budget. I don't, I don't think we want to.
Right.
It was, it was great for you to bring that up, but I think, I think, I think maybe Carolyn Shelman, if we start to get a discussion about it, we're kind of veering off the agenda.
We will bring you back more information. You've asked us to do a committee, you've asked us to look at savings. We will talk to you about recommendations. My job is to do the will of the board, and so, we're going to give you as much information as possible as you try to go through and look at using committees as a resource. We will bring you all that information that we can do. We're going to study SAWs and do some other things to be helpful. We understand our charge. Our charge is to run this business, to get your insight and guidance. We, we are committed to what we're doing.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman.
I look at last year's budget. We, we had a budget of, 2020 was 2.1, and the management team, the CP, has generated 1.44. This year, we're looking at, it's in a 3.9. And if they could do half as good as what they did this past year, then I'll be very proud of the development and the management team and they're doing. And I am fully confident and supporting them to do what's right for this company. Because of what I've seen them do for the last couple of years, they've done an outstanding job. So, I can't tell them and think about negative or false things until I see it happen. All I ask them to do is start considering a process of looking for down the road, like they've always done. And they've generated this. So, I'm very pleased with what I see now. We can talk about the negative aspects of it, but I can see nothing but positive when they generate this 1.44, and they're talking about, out of a 2.1 budget, positive, we generated, this company generated 1.44. And we repaying some debt, debt, and we're doing, they're doing a lot of things. And I think they are doing an extremely great job in moving forward. I'd just like to see them plan more, and I know they're doing it, but I'd just like to hear more about of the planning process, which I haven't heard about enough, that I can really get it to sink in in a direction that they're going. But they're doing an extremely great job, and I'm confident that they will do it. If not, then we just have to go through the drawing board, but I'm sure they're going to keep us informed through the year.
That's well said, and I think earlier, you said you were, you were going to start as soon as the next meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
To give him the information he's seeking.
All of you, yes.
The whole board.
The entire board. I will do that.
All right, any other, we've got a motion, a second, any other discussion? We ready for a vote?
We're ready for a vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And so, without objection, I'm going to suggest a five-minute break.
I've been asking for one.
We've got just two more items on the agenda. Agenda item 13 is the Flex Power Bundle Update, Part Three. And it's John Kossip. But is anybody going to introduce that or just ring him up?
I'll introduce him. John Kossip is our Senior Director of Analytics. He has been in front of the board, but I think it's been several years or a number of years since he's been up here. But he's a very, very sharp guy. Been with the company eighteen years. But he's leading the charge on the power bundle, especially the analytics piece of it. And this is the 900 megawatts of solar, fifty, up to 50 megawatts of storage and a firming capacity that originally we contemplated as a gas toll. But hearing feedback from the community, we kind of have an all-source component to that firming capacity. So whatever technology meets the requirements, we're very much open to looking at it. So John's going to take us through the presentation. John?
All right. Thank you, Chris, and good afternoon, trustees. I'm going to provide an update on the Flex Power Bundle. This complements the updates provided during the October-November board meetings last year. It incorporates feedback we received. And it's an informational update. It's not a voting item. My objectives: to discuss sequencing or the timing for replacing aging plants, aging gas plants. Also, an objective is to describe the importance of firming power to meet reliability. And then to incorporate an all-source element. So that's the Request for Proposals component of the proposal. The agenda: provide a recap of the need for new resources, talk a bit about the value of a bundle approach, talk about firming power, define it, give some examples of what that is and how important that is for reliability, and then cover some next steps. Cut the context, our overall strategy is a flexible path. It's designed to transform our generating fleet into cleaner resources, you know, moving us from our current fleet of traditional renewables, energy storage, smart grid investments, as well as our fifth fuel, which is energy efficiency and demand response, moving us to new products, new innovations such as the Flex Power Bundle, other new products and services. Really, the timing of that is really going to be driven by technology development. Our guiding principles, and then we've covered that this in this meeting, so I'm not going to spend time on this slide. As a recap from our November board update, I want to emphasize that our gas plants are aging. Almost 30% of our capacity comes from plants that are 40-plus years old. That is these areas, this area highlighted here in the dotted box, that's our electric, gas, steam generation. Our team does a great job keeping these plants running and providing the resources needed. But mechanical failures can occur due to age, the number of cycles. So sequencing of future capacity is key to maintaining our capacity and managing risk. The need for the Flex Power Bundle. When we assess our long-range generation plan, about 1,700 megawatts of gas capacity is retiring within the next 10 years. These are aging plants. They tend to run typically during summer peaks, you know, being less reliable, you know, failures occurring in the summer peak where there's a little more financial risk because market prices are higher at that time. So the consequences are a bit higher with these assets. So to fill this need, the Flex Power Bundle is proposed and is envisioned to provide up to 900 megawatts of solar, up to 900, up to 50 megawatts of storage, and up to 500 megawatts of gas toll or equivalent technology that can meet the requirements to firm up solar and firm up the reliability of our older units. Now, the gas toll is a leased plant. It's a plant that's owned and maintained by another entity. It's an existing plant in ERCOT currently running. The highlighted area is something that we added here in bold. That's the equivalent technology. So we're open to other type of solutions, you know, other than a gas toll. And we'll talk some more about that as we go forward in the presentation. So there is value in a valid approach. The technologies are complementary. That is, you know, the benefits can offset the challenges. As we look at solar and think about the main characteristics, a zero-emission resource aligns generally well with load. It is weather and time-dependent, requires backup generation or a firming resource when the sun's not shining. Storage is a zero-emission, a backup resource, depending on the charging energy, of course. But it is limited duration, so it can play a role today, fairly limited. Typically, what you see in the market today is about a four- to six-hour duration, so it can't provide the full backup role. Gas technology, we understand that it's mature technology. It's controllable. It can run virtually unlimited number of hours, you know, depending on, you know, the fuel source and making sure, depending on having fuel available, so. But it does have emissions footprints, so. Bundling resources improves performance and reliability for our customers year-round. So this slide demonstrates why the bundle approach is important. We're showing one of the hottest days across the state last summer. It's August 15th of 2019. We're showing renewable, I mean, wind generation hourly here in the green area, in the green area here. Now, it shows how wind performed, you know, only a fraction of the 23,000 megawatts were producing at these particular hours. And these are very critical hours, peak load of the day, high air conditioning load you see there. And wind was producing about 10% of that total 23,000 megawatts of installed capacity. It did drive up pricing to very high levels, and it led to supply shortage. ERCOT, using their techniques, was able to manage through that. But it does emphasize the need to manage the variability in our renewable resources. This slide also shows the importance of firming power, you know, as part of the Flex Power Bundle. On the left-hand side, we're showing a peak winter week. On the right hand, we're showing a peak summer week. Across the horizontal axis here, from January 21st through January 25th, this is the daily output of solar in dark green. You see the solar profile. Stacked on top in the light green area is the wind output every hour over that five-day period. And in the orange area, that's the remainder of our fleet, the nuclear, the coal, the gas, providing the firming power for around-the-clock reliability as the renewables vary. We also see these vertical lines, which, you know, highlights that one day on January 24th. It shows that you have, that's a typical winter profile, the two peaks, primarily winter heating demand, space heating and, you know, water heating in the morning and also in the evening. Notice there that during those peaks, the solar is not up yet, it's still dark, so other resources fill that gap. Also show a risk point here in a particular time period where it's in the evening hours, solar has dropped off and wind is producing very little, so that also emphasizes the need for these other resources to fill that need. On the right-hand side is a peak summer week. What you see is a single peak. It's a much higher peak than, it's a much higher peak than on the winter profile. The single peak does align generally well with solar. You can rely on some pretty significant output from solar at that period. We also kind of show this risk point here, which is in the morning, very low wind output, the sun is just coming up, and our load is beginning to ramp. And really, that's the air conditioning load kind of driving that customer demand. So the intermittent nature of solar and wind production, you know, shows a need for firming power to provide around-the-clock reliability. This slide also shows the importance of firming power. You know, we're showing some hours, some pretty tough hours for renewables here. These are very high-demand hours. We show a stack here on the left-hand side in the summer. We show about 9% of wind producing, 5% of solar, and the rest of our fleet is providing the rest of that firming capability, our nuclear, coal, and gas fleet. The three stacked bars on the right are examples of very cold winter days, very high demand, a lot of electric heating load. And we have these, as we showed earlier, there's very little solar producing at these hours, they're dark hours. And wind was producing in these examples from 3% to 5%. And the remainder of our fleet providing that firming capability needed to, you know, provide customers reliable service and protect from the volatile market pricing. So given the approach of firming capacity, given the importance of firming capacity, we'll look at what an all-source RFP looks like for the Flex Power Bundle proposal and how we integrated, you know, your feedback that we received. An all-source approach, Request for Proposals, that's something you'll see put out by utilities and regulated markets quite a bit. They tend to ask for any and all resources, open all approaches and technologies. Well, based on our obligation to serve customers and, you know, meeting the needs for our customers, we think that's best met by physical assets to manage risk, you know, the financial risk, reliability risk. So what we've adapted from this all-source approach is utility-scale assets, introducing more storage, solar power, lower carbon resources, firming capacity to meet customer needs, and maintaining portfolio diversity. That takes us to kind of the list of things we will be asking for in this proposal, is solar, the battery storage we talked about, as well as the firming capacity, gas toll, or some other technology. Little more specifics on the firming power supply requirements and up to 500 megawatts of gas toll or a technology that's equivalent, that can, you know, deliver all hours, all weather, year-round, low emissions, a term of 40, 10 years approximately. So our obligation is to provide reliable power to our customers. So the current approach, the Flex Power Bundle, RFP, or Request for Proposals, to include the three components in one request. And the response would have the option to bid on one or multiple resources. And it's really important to sequence the RFP, you know, timing is important to make sure we meet our customers' needs, manage risk. So we're planning to replace our aging gas units, starting in the 2025 timeframe. We want to be thoughtful, study other firming technologies. So over the next six to 12 months, we'll continue to get feedback, study what other utilities are doing in other markets, and finalize RFP and launch, and provide progress at future board meetings. That's all I have.
I'm going to go back to cost. So do we have an idea, like, by source, what is the cost to produce at?
Yes, we do. We have cost estimates for all resources.
But the point of the RFP process is to go get hard.
Okay. That's what I don't want, is for us to spend money and make, going through an RFP process and then not getting that level of detail. Yes, we want solar, but what's the cost? And the reason for that, I think it kind of goes back to, as we move into the reality of the future, of the expectations, the environmental concerns, the poverty concern, the growth concerns, is that, again, if we're going to invest in this technology, what does it cost? And I will tell you, newer technologies cost you more before you get your return on investment. So we're going to be bleeding already with that off the top. And if we sustain, how can we pivot what we've already invested? I almost feel like we need to have like a three-phase approach to the investment and the step or even the flex plan. It's almost like current state, interim state, and what's the cost of that, and then what's the future state of our cost as we look at everything that we have. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, like Paul's point, that will be definitely part of the RFP, understand the cost, the reliability. But to me, what's exciting about this is we're talking about replacing physical plants.
Which is what I understood here, yeah.
These are gas units that are not going to be replaced by financial product. This is physical, real assets are going to serve San Antonio and Texas, and ideally, clean energy sources, you know, 900 megawatts of solar, 50 megawatts of battery. We've got to figure out how to firm that up. If we, if there's a zero-emission firming capacity, we're open to it.
Because that's one of the points.
Well, we're replacing a plant here.
One is qualitative, right, savings, like money savings. And then the other thing I think that people are interested is that what is the savings in health? By someone not getting sick, therefore that might translate into, you know, so-and-so, you know. And I know that we're not into social services, but I do think that that's ultimately what people want to say, there's a cost to our lives, right? There's a cost to investment, and how can we somehow not be, meaning, we're never going to beat everybody's expectations, but that we clearly understand.
Factor that in.
But the data's important to support both cost and investment and cost. If we invest here, again, it costs more, but here's savings in life. So if we don't invest here, you know, this is what's going to happen.
I'm looking at the excellent presentation on this. This is what I've been looking for, and I think this is in good direction in talking about six to 12 months. When we're talking about the firming gas toll direction, understanding getting more solar and working on storage, but gas toll or equivalent, explain that to me.
So, and go back to page eight, I think Dr. Maddie's on page eight.
No, eight.
No, page eight, yeah. So, no, eight.
Eight.
So we're replacing, you know, those physical gas plants that we're going to retire here in the next decade, those are plants that can run at any moment to serve San Antonio. So we're replacing one for one. When we shut down Dealey, we did bring a lot of solar with the 400 megawatts, but we also bought the combined cycle plant in Seguin to back it up. So this is really first of its kind in terms of bringing solar storage. But as you can see, when the weather's not cooperating, or if it's at night, we've got to firm that up.
He's asking about the different types of technology?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for the gas. So if we're talking about bringing on gas, are we talking about reducing coal, or are we just talking about replacing gas for gas?
So we would be, we would be basically leasing an existing gas plant if we could deal with the gas toll to firm up the solar.
Okay.
It'd be leasing a combined cycle, so the plants that we'd be replacing are old gas steam units that basically are less efficient. So it would be a more efficient gas plant to firm up the solar. But again, as part of the all-source incorporation, if batteries can do it, we're open to batteries.
So it could be something else other than gas that replaces old gas units?
Okay.
And then we'll have another strategy that starts to come out to look at the coal units?
Right.
And do things like, should we repower or, but whatever it does, if it doesn't have reliability built in the replacement, then we end up with a ton more risk. So we'll do something very similar to the coal units. It's just, those are the ones that have the highest likelihood of going down. So it's not a priority, it's not a matter of like not focusing on it.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
No, I'm pleased. I'm beyond pleased by the approach. I think this is an open-minded approach, and as long as we are ensure, ensuring that, you know, the foundation of the decision made at the end of this is reliability to our customers, we should be all agreeing, more information is better. And so, you know, I'm confident that we'll achieve our other objectives as well during this, but I'm very happy with this. I appreciate the time spent by staff to consider this and look forward to the evolution of the RFP. My only question, I guess, would be on the timeline of the RFP.
We would like to get done sooner rather than later, but we keep getting, you know, like, I'm going to be honest. CPS Energy, Paul Go Williams, holding solar hostage for other stuff, right? And we can't just do a solar RFP by itself because of those issues. So if we can get everybody to let us, let us get the RFP on the street, get pricing, explore, look at new technology, then we can come back and talk about it. Sooner rather than later, we'd be real happy.
Yeah, I'm glad. This is a marked evolution of where we were last.
Yes, sir, we hear you.
So, you know, I think we'll be able to get input. This is a, this is an open approach to what we've been needing to do for some time, and I think the sooner we can get it on the street, the better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We commit. We will keep coming.
Yeah, and whatever support you need for most of those numbers.
All right. Any other comments or discussion on the Flex Power Bundle update?
No.
Great job.
You're welcome.
So we move to the last item on the agenda, the Flexible Path Community Engagement Update, Part Three, with Jonathan T. Arena.
So, good afternoon. Thanks for having me back today. This is now going to be a continuation of the conversations we had both in October and November around how we take our community input and how we actually put it into practice and improve rather a product or service or a new process internally that ultimately provides back value for our customers at the base of it all. And so, again, as a recap, we're going to be quickly recap what we did in October-November, and then I'm going to be focusing on a couple of examples, two in particular with an additional, maybe four or five that I'll just highlight quickly around where we took specific feedback from rather a stakeholder group, a residential customer, or a group of customers, and again, worked towards providing an improvement for our customer base. And so just as a recap, again, remember back in October-November, we spoke about all the multiple channels that we have when we go out and communicate with our customers. These channels, again, range from our People First Community Care Affairs, which are really grassroots efforts within the council districts and within our suburban cities, where we go and have conversations with our customers ranging from products and services to building questions, as well as promoting things like our Flexible Path survey and even the Flex Step survey. I will highlight, though, additionally, we've actually leveraged these events over the last couple of months, partnering with the city, where the Innovation Office specifically has been attending these events and offering up the digital assessment survey. It's just another avenue to engage with our community base. We saw an opportunity to leverage engagement opportunities between both us and the City of San Antonio, and so they've actually partnered and attended multiple of our events, as well as setting up a couple of times at our Westside Customer Service Center, where they're able to actually interact with customers that are there to see us, but at the same time able to leverage it to get participation with that survey. Something that I hadn't highlighted, that I wanted to quickly highlight before, in addition to speaking with our customers at various levels, I also wanted to mention that we do have a Citizens Advisory Committee that we do meet with on a monthly basis, if not more, to discuss various products and services and initiatives that we have in flight with them. As a quick recap, just for, to level set everyone, this was established back in 97. It's 15 members. 10 members are actually appointed individually by each of their city council members, so each council member gets one appointee. In addition to that, we also have five additional members that can serve as long as they are in our general service territory. So these could be from suburban city or, or there is a possibility to have a duplication of a council district having more than one representative because of those five at-large positions. He actually just walked out, but I wanted to highlight our CAC Chair, David Walter, he is actually, he works for New Star Energy. He's on their market, on their market, energy market side, and he is our current Chair of the committee. And then you'll also just highlight the additional executive members that we have, Luisa Caso, Bill Day, and Mr. Robert Romeo. Quick example of how they participate with us, in addition to attending these meetings where we offer conversation opportunities with them to hear about our initiatives, we also seek opportunities to partner with them out in the community. This past year in particular was really fun because we were able to take them through a legislative process there at the state capitol. They very much enjoy going and having an opportunity to speak to elected officials and speak on behalf of the efforts that they do here with the Citizens Advisory Committee. And then I'll also highlight, you know, that's Mr. Romeo, who was our CAC Chair last year, speaking at a public input session. You all were there and heard his comments. In addition to, they also participate when we have, I'm sorry, did you have a question, sir?
Well, I was, you know, you talked about David Walter as being the current Chair, and then Robert Romeo being the past Chair.
Correct.
Is Mr. Romeo the person that has all that experience in the utility business?
He is. Actually, he's a retired energy executive that was out of Houston. He was CenterPoint.
CenterPoint. I mean, he's spent a career at CenterPoint.
He did. He did.
It shows you the quality of people we have on that.
Well, and actually, to that point, I can highlight maybe a little bit more. So David Walter specifically is actually as part of the Energy Market Desk at New Star, so he's very much involved in energy trading, has a lot of experience there. Bill Day, he is the Corporate Communications Vice President for Frost Bank. He previously, at one time, was also a, is part of the Express News, you know, and then Luisa Caso, currently with Toyota Communications, but is also a very big advocate, active member in our community. I know for sure she's on a couple of boards, ranging from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to a couple of other organizations. So the CAC members themselves bring a very diverse wide net of expertise and involvement ranging from community engagement communications, even to the ability recently of having individuals that have that energy experience. So, thank you, sir.
In fact, I think Mayor, am I remembering right, that you appointed Mr. Romeo?
Romeo, yeah.
He did.
Yeah, he's done a great job.
Yeah, he's got tremendous experience in the industry, too, so it's been a good servant.
Yeah, definitely. Coming over this. And so now I'm going to shift my focus to how we actually take our customer feedback and actually put it into motion. I'm going to go back in time a little bit. Back in 2015, things were not all well in regards to the way we were being graded or looked upon from a customer service perspective. More specifically, there was a news article that came out during that period where we were actually benchmarked against other entities here locally, and we were amongst the lowest, if not the worst, in the amount of wait time that customers were having to wait in order to actually talk to an energy advisor. Those are the individuals that answer the phones and help troubleshoot issues or opportunities for our customers. And I just want to give you kind of a quick snapshot of where we are now. You'll see that there's a lot of improvement that has gone into this. And now to the point that we're being recognized for the efforts that we've put into it. This is not only just technology upgrades, but this is also upgrades with our individuals, our employees, as well as really hearing from customers ultimately, what did they want to see from us so that we can provide them a better one-stop solution. And here's just a quick snapshot of a couple of awards that we've received in 2016, based off of that improvement and those efforts that we've put upon. I'm going to hit on these a little bit more on a couple more slides. Just to give you an idea, the service levels are something that Deanna Hardwick's team, our Vice President of Customer Success, really looks at at daily level. So these are numbers that are getting tracked on a daily, on a daily, day-by-day, I should say, and are shared with a variety of executives to see where this is trending. And what this does is that gives you a good snapshot into the response time that we're able to answer our customers. And in addition to, you'll see that our customer service levels have a direct correlation to the way our overall customer satisfaction scores are. If you recall, back in November, I talked a little bit about customer satisfaction scores. That's a tier-one metric that grades the whole organization as to how we are basically servicing our customers. And you can see on this visual to the right, that you'll see that customer service levels have a direct correlation to what the actual impact on our customer satisfaction scores are. And so you'll start seeing that when we started putting in improvements into the IVR, which is the interactive voice, thank you, response.
I was just blown away by the average response time of four hours.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was.
It's a good number. For those of us who weren't helped this, that's a great number.
It was intense. And so, let me hit on this next one. And so you'll see a couple of the actual activities that we did to help improve ultimately not only just the engagement levels with our customers, but ultimately the overall satisfaction that they have with CPS Energy. So at the walk-in centers, we not only did some branding efforts to make them a little bit nicer and more friendly, use it as opportunities to educate, but we also implemented energy advisors to be able to have video interaction with customers at our different locations, which improved efficiencies. The call centers, completely different approach to the way we thought about staffing and how we trained them and bring them onboard. Even little things from changing their title from a customer service representative to an actual energy advisor, just the positivity that goes into that kind of... to an actual energy advisor, just the positivity that goes into that kind of description and ultimately the level of professionalism that comes with it. And then ultimately, what we were really focused on was it wasn't so much to just get them on the phone and get them off. We wanted to really offer a one-stop solution. So we stopped focusing on the amount of time that they were on the phone with customers. We actually invested more time on the phone with customers because, again, the goal was to offer that one-stop solution so that ultimately the customer would not have to be continuously calling back in multiple times. A second project that I want to spend a little time on is our Construction Service Improvement, or internally known as our CSI project. We received a lot of feedback from the Real Estate Council, local developers, the mayor knows exactly who we're talking about, and a variation of other stakeholders around our inability to kind of evolve with the growing demand that our Real Estate Council members and our developers were looking at. Again, to offer a better experience for them. They gave us feedback including, you know, things ranging from staffing, our systems not being adequate, not enough communications or transparency, and as well as just, you know, improving, the need to improve our process management systems. That went a little too fast. So I'm gonna highlight a video here of Leo Gomez, President and CEO of Brooks, where he actually speaks a little bit to these challenges. And then I'll explain how we took a lot of this feedback and ultimately have made some changes in that area.
Well, as you might imagine, we have $300 million worth of construction activity at Brooks today, over 24 projects. When one project is out of sync and out of schedule and out of budget, it has an impact on a lot of the other projects that we are working now there at Brook City Base. When a light industrial facility is not coming online on time, it is impacting people's lives and the opportunity for a quality job.
So impacting lives and a need for a quality job. So this was back in May of 2017. We started this process where we started having, there we go, all right. Where we saw a lot of feedback from a lot of individuals. And ultimately, what it led to is a creation of a couple of new departments that we have now put into place that has really improved, if you will, a concierge-type service for a segment of customers that it was desperately needed with. We created an executive account management team. These are a group of individuals that work with key stakeholders in construction development and key account management, if you will, large commercial customers, and really provide a concierge-type service to offer and be at their, basically be at their beck and call 24/7/365. Very similar to what we were already doing with our managed accounts, but we elevated it up to give it more of a personal touch. In addition to that, we spoke a little bit back in November, but we also launched our E2B Small Business Team. There continues to be an effort to help and communicate and provide awareness to our small, medium business customers. You know, no secret, those customers that own their small business, they're not only the CEO, but they're also their CFO, their facilities director, their communications rep, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we have to be flexible in the way we communicate with them, be flexible in the amount of hours, what the right times and opportunities are. And the E2B team is now launched under Maria Garcia's team to really help and push that effort. And recently, also continue to work on just having a more unified approach with our customer engineering and our customer service team as a whole. You'll continue to see the continued enhancement and partnerships between these areas, but it has really helped in having that conversation between the engineers that are making the planning and design work, along with our key account managers to be able to provide timely updates and provide information. But we realized we still have work to do. We continue to get feedback around what the experience is. And I'm going to be focusing on specifically what the website offered on these customers, or what I should probably say didn't offer them until recently. And so we've made continuous updates to the website, offering variation of user guides and making it a little bit more functional, making it easier to function and navigate between the pages. For example, on the left, you'll see what the website looked like before. It was just a bunch of hyperlinks that took you to probably a place that you didn't want to go. And you'll see here on the right where we've improved that experience based off of customer feedback. We actually did sampling with our customers to figure out what were the needs that they were requesting, what were the functionalities that they were requesting. And we created a homepage for them within the website that gives them an opportunity to go and click, find an easier navigation, easier dashboard, ultimately leads to dashboard on the backend to give them this information. And there's more to come. Actually, just last week, we did officially launch a new web portal enhancement, which now gives the users, these are the customers that are actually having to go in and fill in the information for the work orders and for the work request. We've actually created a new capturing system that provides them timely updates, which now includes a portal or a dashboard for them to see where their project status is. And this was something that I want to highlight because we were ready actually to launch this back in the late November, early December timeframe. And based off of the feedback from our customers, they actually asked that we hold off until January. They didn't want to transition towards the end of the year, have to worry about training and all of those things. And so we were able to accommodate and work a timeline with them that offered them training opportunities. And ultimately, we launched this last Monday, and it sounds like it's gonna be a nice success. Couple of other initiatives that I'll just highlight quickly is we continue to look at how we continue to improve our CPS Energy homepage. So this is a CPSenergy.com homepage. We have done things like added these tiles that are things that are related to the most frequent-used pages from a customer perspective. We have analytics on the backend that shows us what customers are actively seeking and looking for. And so these eight tiles that you see there kind of rotate on a monthly basis based off of that, off of the data that we're given. And in addition to that, we've also created easy-to-search links here on the right side that provide, again, these are the next set of most frequent-used pages from the website. And then the top banner, I want to highlight one important thing. On the Manage My Account section, we used to have to, this was very interesting. You used to have to click three times to be able to log into your account. You would have to go to the homepage, click on Manage My Account, click on Sign In, and then it would go to the actual username and password. And we were able to streamline that process, make an improvement in partnership with EIT, Vivian's team, and now have that on the web, on the homepage. And this is all mobile-friendly, so regardless of what kind of mobile device you have, it's resized and it is able to function correctly within that site.
Let me still add it on the global navigation bar.
It actually is on the...
No.
Nope, it's not there. I thought it was.
I mean, this can be considered a global nav if it's on your secondary page, but up there where it says my, home, my, whatever.
Yeah, we can take that.
Just in case, is it Manage My Pay? That's Manage My Pay. Might want to add it as a yellow button there, just in case, depending on their downloading time, they might not see that box right away, but they might see the hyperlink right away.
The hyperlink on top.
We can take a look at adding a primary button.
You know, like the yellow button, just as a backup.
Yep, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, because I actually think when you click on the ways to pay, it does give you a link to that, but it also gives you like a location of the walk-in centers and everything else. So, no, that's good feedback. Okay. You've heard over the last couple of months, because it's been presented around STEP, you've heard where we've made changes to our rebate programs. The one in particular that always stands out to me are the continuation of the investment into our solar programs in addition to the partnership that we did ultimately that brought the thermostat program. That went from an offering that basically was you had to get a specific program through us. We had to go and install, and then ultimately you would get an incentive or rebate. And now we've enhanced that product where basically it's a buy-your-own thermostat program or bring-your-own thermostat. And so now there's, you know, an option, I think of like 10 or 12 probably, of different thermostats that you can now buy on your own, install yourself, and then work with us to get a rebate and be part of that reduced, the energy efficiency program that we have in the summertime. And then you saw a presentation last month about the improved outage map. And what I've done here is I went ahead and was able to provide, hopefully, some of the answers from some of the questions that we had here last month. And so I'm gonna play a little quick video, that hopefully this goes. And then I'll, actually, before the video, I guess, goes on, what I'll mention is that there was a question around what the engagement looked like in conversation with our local news affiliation. And I wanted to highlight, we had a storm, and here's a snapshot of all the efforts that were used.
Here's a look at the outage map tonight. No major issues right now, but crews are standing by and ready to restore power as quickly and safely as they can.
Okay, now we're at 160 outages affecting 19,000 customers. Take the radar off this, just so we can look. There we go. This is a nice new feature. All right, so those are the areas, and you see the legend on top? It gives you the number of outages. And they're all color-coded, so red's the worst. That's where you have the greatest amount of customers that are affected, when you have the red color. Luckily, we don't have that, but we do have plenty of this purple, which indicates about 1,000 to 5,000 customers out of power. And that's basically McAllister Park Airport, San Antonio International.
And so, sorry Rudy, because I highlighted like the peak of the storm. But this was a great collaboration with our local news affiliation. When we were ready to launch the map, we actually went out and did some tours with our frequent users of the outage map. And that tends to be actually the weather personnel, so your weather persons. And what we were able to do, we were able to go out, educate them, actually show them a demo ahead of time because we knew that they were gonna, there was gonna be a little bit of a change management, if you will, from their perspective. And we were very happy to see that going into this first true storm, that they were all able to leverage it, not only on their live broadcast at the nine and 10 o'clock shows, but also on their social media platforms. And so it was a really great experience for us, and we really appreciate it. In addition to that, we want to give a shout-out to our partners and everyone else that was on the community that helps push this. Our council members were very active, not only during the storm, but even going into the storm and then after the storm, when they start giving thanks as well to our field personnel that are out there restoring power. We've now gotten into the process from a communication standpoint that when we go into these storm efforts, we are pushing the press releases actively to not only our council members, but also to the city, our colleagues at the city and county via and SAWs, because it just, it makes more sense for us to be as collaborative and proactive. It just really helps from an awareness standpoint, because then you just start seeing them push the information out as well.
And just food for thought, I mean, I think as you look at ways to engage the public, the public really likes tools, they like widgets, I mean, it's not a widget, but they like items like this. And so the question begins, what other technologies, like a chatbot, what are the other things that we can incorporate where the consumer has more of control, what they view, what they see, and how they provide impact?
Yeah, yeah, so something that we've been looking at is just even how do we improve maybe a newsfeed function on the homepage so that they can create their own type of alerts?
RSS feed.
Yes, yeah, and so we're looking at things like that to see how we better improve it.
Baby Yoda increases your visibility.
Baby Yoda does, and actually dogs and cats do too, so just a little secret.
It would be surprising.
If you can include a dog, it's amazing how it just shoots it up.
Yeah, some memes, you don't have your meme up there, your LinkedIn photo.
I get enough of that already.
Just joking, just giving you a hard time.
Another thing that I want to highlight, based off of, again, direct customer feedback, is this is actually an inside view, if you will, of the outage notifications that a good portion of our organization gets when there's an outage that's impacting customers. And what we were seeing was that there was opportunities to start figuring out, like what was the outage history for a specific circuit or a specific customer, if you will? And so Rudy's team in particular, and his leadership team, started looking at the data and using data to help figure out and start seeing these trends. And so this is an example of an older one. But what helps us, what helps from this is that it really gives us a perspective of, okay, what additional resources can we put into the restoration effort? So for example, if I'm a residential customer and I've been out three times in the last 12 months, my experience may not be as well as I would like it to be. And so maybe this is an opportunity for us to specifically go do a community fair in that area to bring education and awareness around reliability programs that we have to offer, and more probably specifically what our tree trimming program looks like so that we can help our customers figure out how to improve that.
And where that might, I'm sorry, where that might also be an opportunity for strategic undergrounding to help, and it doesn't, it's not a demographic thing, it's more of an aging infrastructure thing.
So this is an individual circuit we're looking at?
Yes, and I'm gonna relay on the engineers.
Individual outage that gives, that comes from our operational team that talks about, it can be a circuit, it could be multiple circuits depending on what's going on, but they're focused on, and Rudy's whole team.
So this has been a collective effort to make, again, we're looking at both system and individual customer experiences. So in this case, when we see outage history that, where there's recurring outages, you know, Paul's team and Richard Medina and I, you know, we'll go out, we'll do, you know, more in-depth study. And that, you know, for instance, Mr. Kelly's neighborhood, there was a section where we started seeing higher-than-usual cable failures. So we went out and replaced that entire loop to proactively get ahead of it. So customers in the past, when we didn't have this view, they'd get frustrated. And 12 months down the road, you'd have community meetings and folks would be calling your office saying, hey CPS Energy isn't doing anything to put us in a better shape. Now we're getting way ahead of that almost immediately.
I mean, predictive analytics.
Yes, sir.
Now we're really getting into the cost savings part of this. That's great.
Thank you, Rudy. And then just the last project that I'll highlight, because again, one, it's a great product offering. We went into not only the concept design production, but ultimately the implementation of a low-income security solar light. And so this was actually, we were able to pilot this in partnership in District Five with Councilwoman Shirley Gonzalez. We worked with folks to really figure out a way to offer a home security-like solution at a reduced cost that is powered by solar, so that it wouldn't just add a burden to that customer's bill. And so we've been really excited about that. You've actually seen a video or two of those over the course of the last year in some other presentations. But that has been a nice, a great project for us, where, again, we took direct feedback from our community into helping finding a solution for, obviously, a need that they were seeking.
And by the way, don't forget to hit the 50 push-up challenge, so you can post it on our social. If you guys need some more lights, you're Rudy, one of you.
Who's with us, right?
Come on, let's get those people, let's get those views.
We work so much, we're not allowed to actually work out. But just for a little bit more, you know, context on that, our partner, Greenstone, built that light for us because we couldn't quite find one that was... What it is, it's completely fueled by solar, and it helps the customer keep their bill down because they don't have to pull energy for a security light. And when we got our partner, we said, our community needs it. You're, you know, go in there and design in it, and they must have done, I don't know, Richard Medina, I don't know how many prototypes they did, to get it to be something that could be mounted on the house, somewhere secure, it lowers their bill, and it makes them feel more secure. And we've had really good interaction with that. And that's where partnership and bringing people in really matters.
I remember one of the first ones, I think, was the size of this podium. And it took Richard, me, and someone else, like, to carry it because it just, like, how are we gonna get this on a house? So it was really impressive to see where they ultimately ended up with. And thank you, Paul, for taking that.
A Betamax.
Uh, we started about two years ago.
About two years ago.
And it took us a while, it took us probably about a year, and we kept talking to them about it. And then we took it to Councilwoman Gonzalez, she had a community fair, and we put people who volunteered in a pilot. And then this is also something that we look to put in our, sorry, STEP program.
The reason why I say that because that's my district. I actually live in an area that needs more lighting. And so I just want, you know, this is a great example of that program and what it supports. You know, that sometimes we lose sight with everything else.
She was super passionate about that.
And she asked me to support that and continue to support that.
How big is it now?
Not very big, but now we want to take it to scale.
I mean physically.
This size, maybe?
Richard's coming right over. It's pretty standard now.
This size or this size?
It's about the size.
This size.
You don't have a...
Like a surface size.
Initially, they had a big battery in there, it was a prototype. Now they got all the bugs out, and it's working great.
There's actually a really good video that we were able to capture with our customer. And so we will push that on socials.
Yeah, but those are the things that, I mean, again, relatable. People see a direct benefit, and then they're, you know, instead of all the other stuff.
I mean, it also shows that when there's a dedicated customer, how we can help fuel that kind of innovation. You go from a podium now down to that. We can drive that kind of change.
That's right. Very exciting.
To conclude, for our next steps and look ahead, we are, I think it's been a very common theme throughout today. We are very much committed to continue to have conversations with as many people as we can. We will continue to leverage our different channels and look for new channels, right? We don't want to box ourselves into thinking there's just the, kind of this formula of way we're doing it. And so we'll continue to partner and look for new ways to do it. And we will continue to adapt to these new technologies. to adapt to these new technologies, and hopefully just continue to implement solutions as the technologies come more scalable and affordable for our customers. Take any comments?
Yeah, I just challenge you with 50.
Yeah. I'll see my video later on.
I'll tell you, that was an outstanding presentation, and I'm wondering, it's because you've been on deck for a couple of months. I mean, you probably got that really well.
It has been, it's been, it's been quite, quite fun actually, because you get all excited and then, oh.
So go back, can you go back to, to seven?
Yes, slide seven, please.
So on it, on this, on the communities, the customer service.
Almost there. Yes.
Going back to that, so that, I, I had personal experience, because that was when I was getting confirmed by the city council, and I got an earful when I went over there about, about customer service. One of them in particular, my friend, Councilman Joe Cryer. And, and Paul, this is an example, I brought that back to you.
Yes, sir.
And you told me, we're going to change this. So we, we, we got Felicia Etheridge involved, maybe you can talk about a little bit. That's an example of being a very effective CEO, and then look how that got turned around.
I actually told the story this morning, I went over to the convention center, and there is a convention of industry, energy industry, where there's actually two big conventions going on, the Itron Convention, and I think the, another one's on, totally focused on customer, Deanna was there. And I told her a story, which was ugly. You know, we were in the transition down to, you know, from Doyle to me, we had a lot of things going on, but behind the scenes, our phone system was old and it kept crashing. Somehow, we were having poor performance under a third-party provider that backs up our call center, so we switched and ended up switching in the middle of the summer. And then we had huge turnover because we weren't investing in our people, and so we had some of the lowest staffing levels possible, and we hadn't developed their talent. And Felicia came in with a lot of knowledge and pity on me and said she could help, and we just started reallocating time and resource to programs. And we had to go to the council, we, we actually had a good program that we, that was great. It was, I think it was targeted on helping seniors and taking the late fee off the senior rate and trying to give them more, more time to pay, but we got beat up because we were doing so bad on customer. And it became, you know, council members, every time they saw me, they were, they said, you, you gotta, you gotta fix this. And we just, one after another, just changed the dynamic. We trained up our people, we told, and then we told people, stay longer on the call. Typically, when you have a situation like that, you're telling people, get your customer, get them off the phone till you can get your phone stats up. And we said, no, they're our customers, they're our, they're our neighbors, and we didn't do a good job. So we actually increased our call time, improved our answer rate, improved our training, improved the career path for, for, for the, um, energy advisors, got into new technology, started investing in the website.
Started the crew also.
Started the crew, well, the crew, the crew was started but needed leverage. We were trying to create leverage and focus, and so our whole strategy changed to become, if we're not making our customers happy in general, we're not doing our job. And so it, it, it just was a huge turnaround, and yes, we did subject you, sir, to a lot of, you almost turned around, I think, because it was so bad, but.
But, but it's important, because even through my confirmation process, still have number one priority for council people.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure, we should not be customer service, it should be CPS. I mean, they don't want to be doing that with everything else they have to do. So I do think that it's still something that's top of mind, and continuing to invest and make it still a top priority for us is, is key to our success as well.
We know it's our beacon.
Yeah, but kudos to you for doing that, and Ms. Etheridge, you made a big difference.
Thank you. It was fun.
I know. It was a big challenge.
It was tough to dig out of the hole.
But you could look, look at, look at that progress, and so thank you so much. I know the clock's ticking with your time.